Hello, I'd like to call this regular meeting of March 8, 2022, the Auburn City Planning Board to order. We will follow our agenda tonight. Item number one is roll call, and I will begin on my far left.
Darren Finnegan.
Riley Bergeron.
Matthew Duval.
Evan Seer, Chair.
Stacy LeBlanc.
Tony Ferraro.
Brian Dubois.
And tonight, we do have an absent member, Joshua Daigle, who's an associate member. There is another associate position that is open, but I understand it is in the appointment Next on our agenda are the minutes of the February 8, 2021, regular meeting of the planning board. Are there any amendments to the meeting? The meeting minutes?
Yeah, I have a couple. The first is on page one, right before minutes. It says Joseph Morin's status will be elevated. Joseph Morin is on city council now and no longer on the board. That should be Joshua Daigle. And on page four, it's blank Bergeron 23 Dexter Drive. That should be Sharon.
Are there any other amendments? At this time, I seek a motion to approve the amended minutes.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to propose to, I would like to move by unanimous consent to switch the order of items number four and five on the agenda.
There is a motion to accept by unanimous consent, switching items four and five on the agenda, put in the workshop after the second public hearing. For those that are unaware, motion to approve by unanimous consent will pass unless there is an objection from a member of the board. Are there any objections from members of the board? Seeing none, the motion carries. Tonight, we have two public hearings, so that the public is aware. We have two public hearings and a workshop. The planning board does provide time for public input during public hearings. However, we do not provide time for public input during workshops of the board. We do encourage members of the public who are interested in listening to the presentation and in hearing the board discussion to stick around for that workshop. But I just want everyone to know that if you are here in hopes of speaking with regard to the workshop item, that opportunity will not be provided tonight. However, it will be provided subsequently in an upcoming public hearing. Item number three on our agenda, public hearing. An amendment to the site plan at 10 Subaru Drive, proposed Olive Garden parcel ID number So the public understands the process. We follow a very specific order. The first thing that we will have is the staff presentations. Planning board members may choose to ask questions of the staff at that time. When we are done with our staff presentations and questions of the staff, we will ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to come forward and present any information they think is pertinent. At that time, again, the board may choose to ask questions of the applicant. The next step in our public hearing process would be to open the public input section of the hearing. That is when we would expect to hear from members of the public. After the public input section of the hearing, the planning board will deliberate and form its decision. And when we get to the public input section of the hearing, I will let everyone know how we conduct that section of our meeting, so that everyone is clear on expectations. So at this time, is staff prepared to present their report on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The planning board reviewed the, this site back in October and approved an Olive Garden restaurant at this location. Trillium Engineering, working on behalf of Olive Garden, received that approval for a 6,600-square-foot building last year. Eric Doobie from Trillium Engineering is here on behalf of the applicant. The applicant submitted plans after that planning board hearing for a permit from the state fire marshal's office and approval for an American with Disabilities Act barrier-free permit, as required. And we found during that review that the architect that was from Otto State did not meet the fixture requirements of the main state internal plumbing code and accessibility requirements. Staff worked with the applicant to increase the fixture counts based on that and to maintain clear spaces required for mobility in the bathrooms. And the applicant attempted to shift the building away from the side property line to make room for the additional space and maintain the approved side setback, but found that a revised building location would conflict with an existing underground central main power high-voltage line and protective concrete vault that passes through the site. Just for clarity, I think you can see the cursor. This dotted line running along the sidewalk, the parking lot side of the proposed store, that is the CMP high-voltage line that serves, doesn't just serve the Olive Garden, but serves other buildings on the site. And I'm not sure if it may even serve buildings beyond the planning development site. This area here, on the southern side of the plan, this is the bumped-out area to accommodate the increased bathroom size. The left side of this plan, this is Turner Street here. This is the entrance Subaru Drive that serves all of the businesses in that plaza. And this entrance along Subaru Drive is owned by, the same owner as Evergreen Subaru, as part of their parcel. So this side lot line is a side setback, even though it abuts the accessway. There is a wide piece of green space area, plenty of room for pushing snow off the back of the sidewalk. And even though they are asking for a substantial side setback reduction down to six tenths of a foot, there's still adequate room there to push snow. We brought this back to the board. Normally, an expansion of less than 100 square feet like this would not require that the applicant come back to the planning board, but where it's in the side setback, the planning board is the only group that's empowered to approve a side setback waiver, a setback waiver of any kind, as part of a site plan review. The waiver, as I said, has been asked, has been requested to allow for the building to avoid the site obstructions that they discovered onsite, to maintain the existing traffic circulation within the planned unit development, and to add accessible bathroom fixtures as required by the main state plumbing code. The remainder of the site essentially remains unchanged, and staff has provided, in the staff report, a list of findings, including under site plan review, one through four. What the board needs to find in order to grant a setback waiver is that the waiver is necessary to meet some of the requirements, one through four, of site plan review. Staff's opinion is that the waiver is necessary to maintain the separation from the power line, to provide for vehicular and pedestrian movements on the site, and accessibility within the building to meet the bathroom fixture counts, and that it does meet the other requirements of the ordinance. Absent this, they would not be able to place this building on the site. And also, a restaurant like this, I think, is really in substantial conformance with the types of uses that we've wanted to see in our mall area, and provides a good option for people for another dining experience. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for members of the board? Mr. Duval?
Yeah, so Eric, can you just, is it just that little bit there that's popped out that changes it from 4.47 to 0.6?
This here, yes.
Yep. So if you just cut that off, that's the 4.47?
The...
If you took that line straight across?
Let me zoom in. I think the dimensions are there. This distance here?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can double-check with Eric Doobie. I'm not sure if it's that distance or if it's this distance.
Or if it's the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay. But either way, it's just that little...
It's that small area, approximately 100 square.
Great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for members of the board? Seeing none at this time, we'd like to ask the applicant, representative of the applicant, to come forward and provide information they think is pertinent.
Eric Doobie, Trillium Engineering Group, representing this. So I think we've covered most of the highlights that Eric's talked about. It is the small bump out, which is really that bathroom area that Mr. Duval just nailed down on that. So unfortunately, it was an oversight. It's what happens when you deal with maybe some people that don't quite know local codes. And we've been trying to walk them through that a little bit. So we apologize for coming back and wasting the board's time with this, try to get this experience. But we believe that with their models and the way they work, that this will be fine. And with the green space that we luckily have in this particular site, it's going to work well, especially with the entrance being on the opposite side.
Are there any questions from the board for the applicant's representative? Seeing none at this time, I'd entertain a motion to open the public comment section of the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? We're now entering the public input section of the hearing. Our rules for public comment are as follows. We ask that members of the public come forward and address the board with concerns or opinions. Members of the public are asked to speak into the microphone provided, beginning by stating their name and address, as well as whether they are speaking on behalf of someone else. We ask that speakers please limit their comments to three minutes and remain on topic. In some very limited circumstances, the board may seek clarification from staff or members of the public during this time. But in general, it is the rule of the board not to directly answer questions of members of the public, but rather to take notes and address questions pertinent of the topic during or prior to deliberation. So I want people to know that we may not answer your question directly when you ask it, but we will be taking notes and make sure that questions are answered. However, it is sometimes necessary that the board ask for clarification from a member of the public who is addressing the board. So at this time, is there any member of the public that wishes to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I seek a motion to close the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll give that one to Mr. Duval. All those in favor? We've now closed the public input section of the hearing, and we'll be moving on to deliberation. Are there any further questions from members of the board before we begin deliberation for either the applicant or staff? Seeing none, is there anyone that has a point they would like to deliberate on this topic?
I get the impression that Trillium has been cooperative with the suggestions from staff and to meet the guidelines. And from my perspective, the lot lends itself. If we were ever to make an exception, this would seem to be the one. It doesn't seem like there's any other choice with some of the barriers on the lot. So with all that considered, I vote in favor.
Are there any other members of the board that would like to comment on this at this time?
I think the only comment I'll make is it seems pretty straightforward, like a straightforward ask.
All right. Anyone else? Seeing no one else at this time, I would be seeking a motion. I would ask that whoever's making the motion, please include that it is based on the findings within the staff report, if you find those findings amenable, as well as the conditions. If you find those conditions amenable, as well as any additional conditions that you would wish to impose, please keep in mind that it will be helpful for staff if you include that your, if you include a discussion of the waiver in your motion.
Mr. Chair. This is Liz on the Zoom. My apologies. We do have someone with a hand raised here in the Zoom.
Oh, sorry. I apologize. I didn't realize that we were, that we had the Zoom going.
Yes, I hate to...
No problem. All right, so these are extending circumstances. I'm going to suspend deliberation and, through unanimous consent, open up the public input section of the hearing. Is there any objection? Seeing none, we reopen the public input section of the hearing and would be willing to hear from the member of public who would like to speak via Zoom.
My thanks. We have Jason Lerman with us here.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for letting me be able to address. My only question I have is, does the BOKA codes meet the requirements for the state of Augusta with this gentleman bringing forth the piece before the city to make it easier on him to get what he needs for the permits to move forward?
So your question is, does this meet state standard?
Yes.
Essentially? Do you have any other comment?
No, not at this time. I'm waiting to hear all the things as we go.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else, now that we've opened up the public input section of the hearing, that wishes to address the board?
No, Mr. Chair, I don't see any other hands raised. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing none, I will, by unanimous consent, close the public input section of the hearing. Are there any objections? Seeing none, that section is closed. Does this project now meet state standards?
So, yes, the state review is what triggered the need for the additional bathroom fixtures, and it's the main uniform plumbing code. And we don't use BOKA codes in the state of Maine, but we use the main uniform building and energy codes. I spoke with the building inspector yesterday. He was involved with the adjustments to make it compliant with the plumbing code, and that's really the last verification he needs to do, is to see that final bathroom layout before approving it under the main uniform building and energy code, which is the building code for the state. And the state fire marshal's, from what I understand, is ready to approve the barrier-free permit with the modified footprint as well.
Thank you very much for the clarification. I think we are back to the point where I'm looking for a motion.
So, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve, based on the findings in the staff report, the site plan's special exception for proposed Olive Garden to replace the existing Ruby Tuesday at 649 Turner Street, PID 280-013-000-001. And the general business zoning district has shown on the submitted plans with the following conditions. No development activity until any bonding or inspection fees is determined by the Auburn Engineering Department. An amendment shall be recorded replacing note number 12 on the previously approved plan subdivision plan of Mount Auburn Plaza dated August 2, 2018, to require that development at the site shall be substantially conform with the site plan approved on March 8, 2022. I would also note that what this motion and approval would incur is a decrease, a waiver to decrease the side setback to 0.6 feet.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to approve with acceptance of the waiver, the findings in the staff report, based on said conditions as well. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing, zoning update, Court Street, city core of urban residential area, 1,687.14 acres of urban residential to be changed to traditional neighborhood development district areas. As I understand, this was a tabled item, so I would be seeking a motion to remove this item from the table.
I move to remove this item from the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Item has been removed from the table, and we will proceed with this public hearing as we did with the last, following the same order. We will hear from staff. In this case, there is no specific applicant. We will then open it up to public input. I will remind folks what the expectations are for that. After that, we will deliberate and make our decision. I think before we begin, it's important for members of the public to understand that the planning board does not have adjudicatory authority to rezone this area. We are deliberating whether or not we will forward a favorable recommendation to the city council, asking them to do so. Thank you. Is staff prepared?
Thank you, Chairman. The updated 2021 comp plan recommended the core of the city to, you know, increase the density of housing and business opportunities. With that, we've suggested, staff has suggested 1,687 acres of urban residential to a traditional neighborhood development district. We looked at trying to match what we have for current zoning right now to match what we had existing as close as we could to maximize the density and meet the suggested densities. Essentially, the development, this proposed development adds a wide range of residential and community uses, has a density of up to 16 units per acre in areas that serve or can be served by the public community. Essentially, areas where public sewer and water is available, we, the committee really in the comp plan said, hey, this is where we really need to grow. And so this is one reason why we identified this area. In addition, the new development, we're looking to utilize existing access points, so meaning that where the highest road densities are for the number of vehicular access points into the collectors and through the, through the city as it moves. Again, this was another reason why this was picked. Just to kind of touch on some of the allowed uses, we can actually go to a slide that kind of gives more slide there. And that's a real, this slide here is a real comprehensive slide in terms of what would be allowed uses in 4.2. But just to kind of summarize, low and high-density residential dwellings would be allowed, home occupations, community services, government uses, small offices, mixed-use buildings, and small commercial operations. That's really the focus of this area and what is allowed. I don't have, I can't read that. Just to kind of add a little bit more to that conversation in terms of what allowed uses are, anything that would require a planning board approval is anything that has to do with any kind of business use. So professional offices, medical and dental clinics, general retail, restaurants, those are the type of items that would require planning board approval. At the staff level, it's really the single-family homes, duplexes, townhouses, multifamily, but the threshold for multifamily would probably take precedence over 5,000 square feet.
Or three units.
Or three units, kicking us into subdivision, which would, again, require, I know it's a little misleading here that it says that it's permitted use and that staff could approve it, but when you hit those thresholds, it would require us going back to the, going back to the planning board. To note, in this area, in the 1,600 acres, probably 70% of the lots are essentially not meeting what the conformity is of the current zone. So either they don't meet setback, the lot's too small, the density's too high, there's all kinds of different scenarios. But the, you know, the truth of the matter is, is that if we went to something similar to this, as we're suggesting in 4.2, a lot of those lots would become, it would be conformed lots, so that would kind of solve that issue. In addition, we talked a little bit about, in the last meeting, we talked a little bit about additional fixes to homes or additions to homes. If you had a fix, let's say you had a front porch or, you know, breezeway, and you wanted to fix 50% or more of that breezeway, you couldn't do it in this case if it was in, if it was a lot in a non-conformance, if you didn't meet the setback requirements. You could do a repair, you could paint it, you could change the siding, but if you wanted to improve it by more than 50%, current zoning, if it was non-conforming, wouldn't be allowed in this particular case. So again, if we went back to 4.2 or something similar, I think we could, you know, have a lot more flexibility for current ownership that's out there. To kind of go over a little bit of what the building placement looks like, front setback, principal setback, minimum of five feet, maximum of 15 feet. Side setbacks are a minimum of five feet. There is no maximum on the side setbacks. Rare setback is 10 feet. Building lot coverage could be up to 70% max. And then having usable open space, you would need 10% minimum. So, and then the frontage buildout, 60% along the front setback is the primary. So basically, you want to bring the homes, the new homes or the existing homes and the additions closer to the road, slow traffic down, give the ability for, you know, traffic to move around nicely, and then give walkable space. I think that's a real key to this thought process here. Building width, there is no, just to kind of go on the lot size, there is not necessarily any minimum lot size. It really has to do with the building size and the minimum width of the building. That's kind of our constraining, and then you adding the setback requirements on the side, that kind of drives what the requirement is for the frontage. Building height minimums are one-story, so you could have single-family dwellings in this area. And then the maximum height is three stories max. But that does not, you could finish the attic space in this particular case. It would be a permitted use to have a finished attic space. Here's an example of existing, an existing legally non-conforming lot. This is on Sheridan Avenue. The line represents that 25-foot setback, and essentially now, you see that most of those houses are closer to the road. So I think this is a great example of non-conformity. Again, I think it's about 70%. I drove every road in the 1,600 acres and looked at it real closely and how the houses are laid out amongst the lots, and then looked at it again on GIS and said, hey, you know, this is a real issue I think we have in this area, and this would be a really good fix. Other, I guess other advantages, and it's on the slide here, it allows for infill development, encourages, you know, houses to be renovated. In some cases, it would promote housing affordability if the, you know, the... In some cases, it would promote housing affordability if the, you know, the, the, if we can bring up the inventory and the supply and demand piece happens and we create more suppo-, you know, more supply, we might be able to drive down housing costs here in Auburn. I think that that is a, is a real big piece for a lot of young folks trying to find places to live in Auburn. Helps small businesses. Out of the comp plan, you know, we looked at businesses as, we saw them as businesses in a neighborhood. And what that might look like, it may look like a small mom and pop store where you can walk there and get milk and, you know, some candy with the kids and maybe some ice cream. But that real community feel where you've got, you know, a small little business in a, in a neighborhood. And that's what I thought process is and what was included in the twenty twenty-one comp plan. And that's, that's the reason why we really shot for, you know, the business aspect of the, of the zoning in this particular case. Promote walkability. You know, a big part of what I'm working on, besides the, the zoning stuff, is really connectivity in the community and having walkable places and, you know, a place where, where kids can walk safely to and from areas within the community and just for people to get outside and to walk. And it's getting from these neighborhoods to a destination, maybe it's, maybe it's the riverfront in this particular case. And then, you know, we all think about New England's downtowns and we think about New England homes, small lot sizes, close to the road, people sitting in front of their homes, you know, chatting with their neighbors. That's that charm, New England feel. And I think that, that if we went with zoning very similar to this, I think that it would really inspire that feel of a good place to live. So again, another reason for the form-based code. And as I've mentioned a couple of times, the seventy percent non-conformance, and really this is regulating the wrong things. This is the biggest point I need to make. We're regulating the wrong thing with our setbacks. It doesn't necessarily fit into this community. These neighborhoods and, and we'll hear the public, I, I took two hundred phone calls, probably on this topic. People love their, these old neighborhoods. It's really important to them. And I think if we do it right, we can, we can continue to, to save that neighborhood and what people really enjoy about it, but at the same, at the same time, create opportunity. And I think those are the, the biggest takeaways from all of this.
Are there any questions for staff or members of the board? Yes, Mr. Bergeron.
Something that was in our, in this month's packet that wasn't in last month's was the proposal number three to utilize public parking in the form-based codes. And in the part we got, T one, I mean, T four one and T four two are highlighted in red. Does that mean that that, that's a new?
Yeah, that was, that was something that was new. I guess I'm a little, you know, call me green or what have you in, in terms of proposing. As we see projects in form-based code and, and not necessarily, and I thought this was a good opportunity to present this to the planning board. But as we deal with form-based code, there, there's some growing pains. And, and part of that is, in some of these really dense areas, it's hard to find the required parking, but the city has spent some time building public parking. And then in, in some instances, there could be an advantage to be able to utilize public parking that we've already, you know, spent public money on for the benefit of creating housing in this, in this zone. So four point one and four point two, as they wrote, as you guys, as they wrote it and created the MUNI code, they, they left out four point one and four point two. And as we look around, there are opportunities for public parking that was established in these areas. And we felt that this was a good time to possibly talk about it. And then the other one, I'm glad you brought it up, is the front setback. And some of the bigger developments, if we look at the opportunity of three and a half stories, that I think that could be abrasive to some. And we want the, the ability for those setbacks not to be right front and center next to somebody. If they have a bigger lot, they could, we could create that setback requirement from the accessibility of a parking lot, of a sidewalk, or a private road. And that's, that's really kind of unclear right now in our, in our zoning for form-based code. I think it's part of, a little bit of part of our growing pains. But it's as we look at developments and what fits best in a neighborhood, I think we need, I think we need as planning staff and as planning board, I think we need more opportunity to be a little bit more flexible to get the, the development to fit into that particular geography of what we're dealing with, what's the surrounding neighborhood.
I think especially in the case of developments that involve multiple buildings, we were looking for that flexibility to be able to orient those buildings toward an internal drive and give some separation from the surrounding ones and from the street.
But currently, there's not any public parking in, or is there public parking in this zone? Because as far as I know, the, the garage is, looks like it's a thousand, more than a thousand feet from the zone.
Yeah, there's, there's not a lot in the area that we're talking about right now. It would only apply in those areas that are close to the public parking lots or where one was created over time.
Are there any other questions?
I have a few, but Mr. Ball.
Sure, yeah, okay. So when I look at the zoning, I see such parameters around bed and breakfasts, you know, less than four rooms, does not need a special exception, greater than that it does. But when I look at the office spaces and the retail space, I don't see any kind of parameters around size, like volume of people that can come in. Because when I look at things like the restaurant, it says what, like ten seats, sixteen outdoors? So it kind of gives me a, a kind of a conceptual idea of the size that we're looking at and people coming in and out. But from a retail space, is there some numbers that you can provide around how big those retail spaces can be?
We, we don't have that in the form-based code. There are some parameters in the comp plan around that in matching the existing character of the neighborhood. In order to do many of those special exceptions, I think the planning board would look at both the comp plan and zoning ordinance, or we could add clarity here if that helps. I know some of the comments that you received suggested maybe modifying this T four two into something that has a lot of the same characteristics, but, but limits it in other ways. So I think that's certainly within the board's purview to add those specificities.
Yeah, and I think, I think this gets back to the, the last question and those points that we brought up that were kind of new to the board. This is kind of a growing pains kind of thing where, you know, we would have to work through it as staff and as a planning board on each individual case. There is, there is no square footage requirement or a minimum or maximum on this, so we would really have to. The good part about this is that it, it's a, it would require going to the planning board and we would require a public discussion on that and to see if it meets and fits into the character for a site plan and a site plan review and, and meeting those criteria for parking and for accessibility and, and safety and all those items. We would certainly want to check all those boxes off and make sure that they're addressed in an approval process.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I got a, a few questions here. So can you, that chart is hard to read. So for the benefit of people here, can you note the differences in terms of use and also housing density between T four point one and T four point two?
Well, the, the chart that you're looking at is just allowed uses. So, and I'm gonna, I'm pretty good at, at form-based code. I've got some of it memorized, but I don't have it all memorized if we're gonna compare four point one to four point two. The biggest, the biggest takeaway between four point one and four point two is that the maximum height is, is two stories. And with an attic space on four point one versus four point two on multifamily, the, the, those densities almost are the same. It's seventy percent on four point two and sixty percent on four point one. I'm going, I'm going from memory. But those are the biggest takeaways. The restaurants are not allowed in four point, four point one where they're allowed in four point two. And I say, and I want to say, when I say restaurants specifically, thirty seats, under and over thirty, they're both not allowed in four point one, so.
Four point one has a slightly larger front setback as well.
Yep, there is a front setback difference. And then.
It's fifteen feet, I think, right?
Fifteen to twenty-five in that window on four point one.
And then art galleries would require coming to the planning board on four point one versus just a, a staff approval under four point two.
I think one of the, one of the biggest differences from a residential perspective would be that two-story maximum versus a three-story.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
And the density is, the footprint is, I think it's sixty percent if I'm not mistaken versus seventy percent the footprint of the total lot.
And so this is, I just want to highlight the, the proposed changes with this question. So right now, it's zoned urban residential, most of this.
Correct.
What are the differences? What, what is the actual measurable differences between urban residential and either T four one and four two, or four two, because they're very similar?
So urban residential, it's essentially one or two family homes. So if it's a one-family home, you have a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet. For two-family homes, you have a minimum lot size of twelve thousand square feet. The road frontage is, I believe it's a hundred feet. The depth of the lot is a hundred feet. So those are the, kind of the minimums for lot sizes.
I think the other, the other big one that John touched on is that it requires a larger front setback that a lot of the buildings in the existing neighborhoods don't.
Twenty, a twenty-five-foot front setback is the requirement.
So the, what are the practical differences?
The front, the front setback is a practical difference. The minimum, the lot sizes and the frontage requirement is a practical difference.
And not allowing a multifamily is a big difference.
Right, which leads to my next question. So just to clarify, because it always gets inserted in, in the middle of other things, subdivision is triggered at three units?
Correct.
So if somebody wants to put in a, a building or develop something that has three units or more, then it comes to the planning board for subdivision?
Three lots or three units.
Three lots or three units, right, okay.
If it's a multifamily though, if it's not three individual lots, if it's a multifamily, the planning board could approve that under site plan review versus going through the subdivision ordinance.
We have a choice in that, right? But either way, it comes in front of the planning board?
Correct.
With, with a notice to all abuters within five hundred feet as well.
Yep, okay, thank you. And then one more question, I think for now, sorry to be so verbose here. When you drove this, did you notice, is, is there a lot of heterogen- any heterogeneity within the area? So are there some places where you might, that look fundamentally different from others? Because we're proposing to make a large chunk of Auburn uniform in terms of the zoning ordinance. And I'm just wondering how the character of those neighborhoods maps against this, the current character maps against this, this area now?
Yeah, and I think that's a good question, but I ask myself that same question and I think, and I took a step back and I'm saying, the current neighborhoods that are there, those, I don't feel that those neighborhoods are going to change. We're not gonna, people, the return on investment on tearing down an existing structure and rebuilding to the new standard just doesn't make any economic sense. So the existing charm of, of a lot of neighborhoods that I've gotten, received calls from, that those aren't going to change. I really feel that there's not a lot of opportunity for additional development. There may be a onesie-twosie infill lot where something happens or, you know, unfortunate story of someone passes away and they don't, they don't have anybody to pass the house on and the house kind of gets dilapidated and they tear the house down and rebuild it to a new standard. There will be some opportunities like that, that may, that may change over time. It's not going to be overnight. It's the vacant land that, that really is in the outskirts of that area that we're talking about that is going to really make the biggest impact to this area. But again, we, there has to, from my perspective, there has to be some, a little bit of growing pains in terms of how are we going to respond to a housing crisis in the city? How are we going to create opportunity? How are we going to drive prices down? So there may be, there may be a little bit of growing pains. We looked at, again, we looked at form-based code and, you know, Eric and I do this every day, but we always have, there's always an issue, you know, there's always something, how does this fit? And I think there'll be further discussion with the board, how do we make this better? And we're already bringing up this, those vacant lots. We really want to make setbacks not on the front of the road, the existing road, towards closer to the existing neighborhoods, but further back so they can have their own neighborhood, so they can have their own community on that back eight or nine acres, so they have their sense of place. So I think that's part of the, the flexibility of form-based code. And I think it, it may be the, it potentially will be the envy of many communities in the state if the city of Auburn decides to go this way. I really truly believe it. Because there's, there's opportunity to really make some, some nice neighborhoods in this, what we have for availability for real estate in this area.
Great, thanks. And I, you know, I will note that this does promote infill, which has been one of the central tenants of the comp plan of Auburn for, since what, nineteen sixty-four at least?
Yep.
Yeah, so, and thank you.
And it, it takes advantage of the existing infrastructure that exists as well and relieves pressure on the more rural areas for housing.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, at our last month's meeting, we had a question of, of similar about why four point two versus four point one. And I don't see a significant difference here. I mean, most everything is still permitted or allowed through special exception. Very few, the restaurants being one of them, being outright prohibited. Some of the concerns seem to be around businesses and perhaps increased traffic on my neighborhood street, for instance. So maybe you can talk to that. Are, are we talking about, you know, growing up, we had a, a watchmaker or repair person in my neighborhood. We had someone who gave piano lessons. We had a small trophy, neighborhood trophy store, corner store, you know, convenience store, all of which are gone now. Are we talking about getting back to that environment? Or are we talking about something more substantial that will, would open up the floodgates for, for substantial more traffic?
I would, I would think from, I was part of the, you know, the group that updated the twenty twenty-one comp plan and I did a lot of the rewrites as I prepare it to submit to the state for approval. And I've, I've read it many, many times and, and I looked over the notes and making sure we're capturing what people, what, what the public wants. And that's, that's exactly what the public wants, that we got. And that's, that's exactly what the public wants, that we got from, in the input process, that we want to bring them, hopefully get the mom and pop store, create a sense of place, you know, have small businesses, um, that support the local community. Um, this isn't about, when we say retail, this isn't about Walmart or Target coming into town, uh, into your neighborhood. This is about small business, uh, maybe a family business that supports the local area with, you know, um, some small grocery or a specialty skill like a watchmaker or something like that, or a locksmith, um, that's, that help the local community. So, uh, that's, that's the intent. All of those requ- all of those requirements, uh, and we're talking, when we talk about retail and businesses, requires staff to look at it and look at all the requirements of site plan review and, and how that affects, and then take it to the planning board. We'd want to make sure that, you know, it fits in the, into the neighborhoods that we're proposing, uh, uh, you know, a business. If we know that it's going to, to generate significant amount of traffic, it's probably something that the staff's not going to, we, we wouldn't recommend it. Um, that's part of our internal review that we would do with engineering and with recreation and with public works and planning staff code. It would be all part of our discussion that, you know, just, this just doesn't make sense. A Walmart, you know, in some of these nice neighborhoods just doesn't make sense, but maybe a small little convenience store does. Um, and, and those are those, the discussions that we would have. And all that would have to be laid out in this, in the application process for the planning board to review.
I think, I think you described kind of the idyllic view that the comp plan committee had of maybe a small coffee shop or, um, a service like a locksmith or a watchmaker. Uh, we've had the T four two in place now for a few years in some of our in-town neighborhoods served by water and sewer. And, um, I don't think it's that, we're, we're making it allowable if this comes to pass. It's not something that, um, you know, somebody from out of state is going to see that as a business opportunity and try to build it on a low-traffic street. It's, uh, I think we've, uh, we allow for home occupation, small in-home offices, small salons, that kind of thing throughout our residential neighborhoods in Auburn and have for, for decades. There's only one in the T four two district that I recall, um, over the last couple of years since we've had that in place, that was a single-seat barber shop, I think it's on, uh, Western Prom, um, that we, we would have approved as a home occupation, but didn't have to use the standards because the T four two zone allowed it as, as a use. I don't expect that you'll see much for commercial uses, although the comp plan committee envisioned that they were, they were hopeful that we would see some, uh, small businesses start within neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Any other questions and comments? I have a, I have a couple of questions. When we discuss restaurants, I immediately think in the area of Heathco's. Would Heathco's be considered a restaurant?
Yes. Convenience store and restaurant.
And certainly not allowed in the current, um, urban residential zoning district. So why is that allowed? Could you just explain to everyone the, sort of the-
Yeah, the, the city had tried, and, uh, I'll take this, if you don't mind, the city had tried in the past to preserve some of those existing neighborhood businesses. So I know in the ninety-five comp plan and the two thousand and ten comp plan, um, we had what's called a neighborhood business and it's, I think it, when they first did it, it was a little bit of a risky move to be accused of having spot zoning. Um, but they picked out the existing neighborhood businesses and they created a zone called the neighborhood business that sits in the residential neighborhoods and allowed for some flexibilities for those to continue. Um, there's a pizza market on the corner of, uh, Park Avenue and Lake Street. Um, Gowles started as that, uh, or was that when they created that zoning, but the zoning down there has since changed to allow for, uh, there's a number of them throughout the city, but they've sort of dwindled over time. They haven't been reused in all cases and a lot of them are on the way of, of single-family or two-family residential development.
So is it safe to say that we had to do that because the zoning that exists now doesn't actually match what the neighborhood-
Yeah, they were, they were trying to preserve those businesses within a zoning structure that really didn't allow it.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question on top of that? So, kind of that spot zoning that you were just talking about, like, so like, in, say like a fair, like a quick question, so let's just say Gowles Market, right? Someone wants to tear that down. Would they then be able to then rebuild another market in that spot zone or is it then null and void?
Yeah, they, they could. They could expand the building or replace the building. There are parameters that they have to meet, but yes, they could. Or they could change to a different use that's allowed in that neighborhood.
Okay. Just within that spot zone though, right?
Yes, yep.
And I have one more follow-up. So, uh, takeaway restaurant, so a restaurant that has no seats, is that considered a restaurant or is that a convenience store?
We don't differentiate here. Um, so I think that would, that would come out through the review process. And I mean, certainly not a drive-through or like a Dunkin' Donuts generating traffic, but I think you could have some kind of a, a takeout service that includes some seats under that. But we really don't differentiate here. That's a good, good question.
Okay, thank you.
Did that, if I could just add a little to that, I, I would think that that would fall under, um, anything that's up to thirty seats, but it, you know, there could be that up to, it could be from zero to thirty, so the takeout piece would fall under there.
And so one more question. Are these, um, T four one, T four two, are they adjustable by us as we apply them or not?
If, the planning board could certainly recommend, recommend changes or, um, as has been suggested in some of the comments you received, there could be another T four zero, you know, a T four two-point-one.
Creating another zone.
Another zone.
Okay, thanks.
Um, there is a question and concern about rezoning a large section of the city to fall under the same zone. Does, is this area currently all under, um, urban residential?
Urban res and a little piece of multifamily suburban, um, I believe in this area. I don't think there's any other zones.
Small piece, yeah.
Okay, so we're not talking about taking areas that are, have multiple zones and then stacking them under one zone? The, these are essentially already under one zone?
Correct.
Two zones, yeah, urban residential and multifamily suburban.
And then the multifamily-
A small piece in the, uh, Turner Street, uh, Lake Auburn Ave neighborhood here.
Yeah, yeah, I would assume where it's a little more dense.
I guess just to add a little bit more to that conversation. Again, the, the, the comp plan two thousand and twenty-one really suggests that we should look at, um, making ease of our, our current zoning and with that, you know, trying to minimize the amount of zones within the community. Um, so that, that was a, kind of the first step was to kind of try to merge, well, in this case, a small portion of one and then a larger portion of another, but in, as we move this forward, uh, more, more changes, we're, you know, we would look to, look for uniformity as we approach more and more, uh, different zone changes as well, so.
Yeah, if I recall, that was one of the primary goals of the most recent revision, that the two thousand and ten had, um, a dizzying number of, of zones and the city already has quite a few to begin with. Um, there was sort of a concern from a board member earlier, and I took it to be an enforcement con- uh, an enforcement concern, that if we don't have standards, um, within the zoning ordinance specifically with regard to, I think it was businesses, um, that we may find ourselves at a disadvantage. Um, the staff believe that, um, allowing the board to review under special exceptions, site, and site plan review provides us, um, with an enforcement, uh, opportunity?
If, if there can, see, we have the site plan and special exception criteria, so I think if there is a size that fails to meet one of those criteria and we tie a condition to that, then yes. Um, but it certainly wouldn't hurt to be more specific. And if you thought there was an appropriate size cap to a building, um, the comp plan referenced, um, not more than twice the size of adjacent houses, I think it was, but something that takes into account the, uh, the scale and the immediate area and caps building sizes in that way.
Okay, I, I asked the question because I wonder if we really need to use size. You know, we have tools at our, our, our disposal, I'm looking at the ordinance right now. Um, you know, we can find that provisions for vehicular loading, unloading, parking, um, pedestrian circulation, uh, on the site and onto adjacent public streets will create hazards to safety. Um, that's obviously something that would be of paramount concern within a, a neighborhood environment. Um, that the bulk location or operation of proposed buildings and structures will be detrimental to and adversely affect the use and values of existing development in the neighborhood or the health or safety of persons residing or working therein. So certainly looking at whether or not, um, the size of a retail business plopped down next to a single-family home would negatively affect its, its value. Um, provisions for onsite landscaping are inadequate to screen neighbors properly. Um, screening is something that the planning board deals with quite often. Commercial screening, uh, tends to be quite substantial, often consisting of a, of a minimum of a six-foot fence as well as evergreens, um, that are planted for screening. Um, there are provisions for, I won't read all of them, uh, I just want the, the public to, to hear these things, that, uh, there are provisions for exterior lighting, whether or not that lighting will create safety concerns or, um, essentially light pollution for neighbors. Um, um, will create fire hazards, um, that's in site plan. And then under special exception, we get to go even further and we get to say, does it fundamentally change the character of the neighborhood or is it detrimental to the ni- character of the neighborhood? So I ask the question just to highlight that, well, w- we could utilize, uh, the size of a buildings to, to regulate those things. Um, when it comes to a residential neighborhood, our arsenal of things that, that we can use to say, no, this is an unacceptable, um, project are quite large and we don't need to find all of them. We just need to, one, right there, this building is large enough that it's going to create more traffic than we think this, this neighborhood can handle, so, there you go. Done. Um, so that's why I asked that, I, I wanted to, I understand that people up here see these all the time, that, that, and we, we were talking about those, right? That's something that staff mentioned, but the public might not actually be aware of it. Um, and I guess, uh, staff, uh, touched on this and another member touched on this as well, but, um, we have discussed, um, we have discussed development, um, outside of the city core and it has been quite a contentious, um, issue as of late, um, with regard to areas like the Lake Auburn watershed, um, large areas of the Ag Zone, um, talking about development in South Auburn. Um, and it's been my understanding and hearing from the council as well as the community that really desires to build from the inside out. Um, and so I say that just to ask, so, but the entirety of this area is covered by public water, public sewer?
Yes.
Or, or close enough that an extension could be made.
It's adjacent to current-like development? That is to say, we are not going to take, uh, we're, we're not going to place houses on small lots next to houses that are on large lots currently?
There, there are larger parcels as you get towards the outer areas of this area where, um, there's more opportunity for new units to be created, but I think-
Okay, I guess, I guess with that, I'm asking, does this allow us to build from the center while actually maintaining the character of that neighborhood versus as we build out fundamentally changing a neighborhood?
And it, and it also, I think, expands the opportunity to build in the traditional character to the, the perimeter of the area that's been already built in that traditional character.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Um, seeing none, there are no applicants. Um, before I, before I ask for, uh, public, uh, input to be opened, I will remind those of you that are here, um, that, uh, you know, we are asking you to be here to address, uh, the board with your concerns and your opinions with regard to, uh, the, this proposal. Members of the public are asked to speak into the microphone provided. Please begin by stating your name and address. We do not require that you be an Auburn resident, um, that is simply for the record. I know that's a piece of, a concern of some members. Um, and please let us know whether you are speaking for yourself or whether or not you are speaking on behalf of someone else. Uh, we ask you to please limit your comments to three minutes. Um, I will keep time for you and, uh, will as politely as I can let you know if you go over. Um, know that in some very limited circumstances, the board may seek clarification from staff on behalf of members of the public, um, during the public comment time, but that in general it is the rule of the board not to directly answer questions, but rather to take notes and address questions pertinent to the topic during or prior to deliberation, so that you know if you ask a question and you do not receive an answer, that does not mean that you will not receive an answer. Um, there, there are members of the board that are going to be taking notes and writing down questions. Um, also know that, uh, it is possible that the board may ask, um, you for clarification if, if there's something that you're saying that we, that we don't quite understand, so. At this time, I'll seek a motion to open the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? The public input section of the hearing is now open. If you would like to address the board, please, uh, do so by coming forward, um, beginning with your name and address.
Mister Chairman, also, I failed to mention it before, but if people online in the Zoom meeting can raise their hand, then I think after the-
Uh, yes, thank you for reminding me. I, I will go to Zoom after folks in the room have-
Thank you.
Exhausted their comment. Please begin, yes.
Yeah, my name is, uh, my name is Ralph Harder and I live at, uh, Sher- on Sheridan Avenue, the famous Sheridan Avenue, which you saw here. Um, and I'm speaking for myself, uh, my wife, um, long-term, uh, residents of Auburn. Um, and, uh, my concern is that, uh, this proposal changing, uh, from, uh, is really around the permitted uses. The current permitted uses in the urban residential zone are substantially different from what's being proposed. And, uh, as I've heard the discussion, um, this evening, I think other people have had those concerns, uh, with, um, basically, uh, what seems to me of an ill-defined sense of what, what a commercial permitted use is going to be, what is a small permitted use. I don't see that anywhere defined in the current code. Uh, it's true that, uh, with site plan review and special exceptions, that could be teased out, but, um, it seems to me that, uh, this is, um, a solution, uh, you know, that's looking for a problem. In our neighborhood, I mean, we're very happy with, um, the way it looks, with our access to commercial, um, businesses and, uh, i- i- if there were other commercial businesses needed there or other people wanted them, there's really very little infrastructure. There's not walkways in the neighborhoods, there's no sidewalks on our street. So, why not build out the infrastructure and then bring the businesses in? And is there a clamoring for, for small businesses in these neighborhoods? Are people, you know, wanting to go into business? If so, I, I'm not aware of that, so, um, those are my concerns and it's mainly, it's not the density, which I understand, that, uh, makes sense to if we want to increase density to do it with these public services, but it's in the permitted uses. It's in a, it's a broad expansion of what we have now and it, it will, in my opinion, uh, change the character of those neighborhoods. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Ryan Smith. I'm here speaking on behalf of myself. I live at 11 Harris Street, right beside the high school in this neighborhood. I just wanted to say I really appreciate everyone working on this. I think this has a lot of really good ideas, a lot of good to it. So increasing the density, allowing for more single-family homes to be put in is fantastic and use some of this land and allow for, you know, smaller setbacks so we can rebuild our aging homes, I should say, because my house was built in 1908. So I would really appreciate being able to rebuild my porch on the front eventually. But I guess I do have some concerns with the uses in terms of like multifamily. So large multifamily developments is a very large concern of mine in these neighborhoods and I get that it would then have to pass through the planning board, but then I'm kind of putting my trust in you guys to make the right decision for my home's value. So I, that makes me uncomfortable and I think it makes a lot of other people uncomfortable who live in these neighborhoods. So I know we went on the GIS, you know, last time, but if you go over to 133 Lake Street, it's a 2.3 acre parcel, there could be 37 units put on that parcel on Lake Street with this new zoning change, allowing for the multifamilies. And if you go over to 147 Lake Street, there could be 58 units on that lot. And then if you go over to 75 Park Avenue, which is a three-quarter acre parcel currently for sale, you could put 12 units on that and that definitely does not conform to these neighborhoods at all. So I don't even know why we would even allow that to even be reviewed by the planning board because it doesn't fit. And a family member of mine recently went through lot by lot on the GIS, going from Taylor Brook all the way up to the high school, and 93% of the buildings are single or two-unit family homes. So I would just, you know, put my vote in, I guess, my opinion to sort of amend this. And the only amendment I could really see would be to only allow up to two units per building to better fit the neighborhoods and continue the development in these neighborhoods with one and two family homes because these homes have been here for 100 years and that's exactly what we see in these neighborhoods. But even so, I don't think we should even allow that to go to the planning board to put a 10-unit building in some of these neighborhoods where there are no 10-unit buildings, you know? It just doesn't, it doesn't fit and I don't even think we should even contemplate that or even allow it to be brought up to the planning board. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Mark Chasse. Excuse me. I'm in Auburn Mayfield Road and I'm speaking for myself. Not seeing the balance sheets on things like demographics, jobs, wages, taxes, all those businesses, all those kinds of things. We are arguably entering into, if we're not into, a, an economic recession in this country. And I don't know how gas prices and other things, you know, will affect food prices and everything else, but it's probably going to impact whatever it is you're going to do, you know? And, you know, I don't have a lot of advice to offer except if it comes to that point. When I was living in Florida, Deland, Florida, small community, we did institute the Habitat for Humanity program, you're probably aware of that. And so that was our way of being able to build, you know, small homes, low cost, that kind of thing. And we probably put out like 25 or 30 units in different places. So that's about, that's about it. But the costs, you know, are going to, are going to rise. This inflationary period is going to go higher than it is now. So just--
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jay Brunchek. I'm the Director of Economic Development for the City of Auburn. Unfortunately, I'm not able to reside in the City of Auburn, so I reside at 58 Louise Ave in Lewiston. And the reason for that is my wife and I were looking for a home to buy in Auburn and we could not find one. We have Brian Wood, our Assistant City Manager, who also wanted to reside in the City of Auburn but could not find a home to reside in the City of Auburn. We have James Schiller, who is our new manager of the Auburn-Lewiston Airport, who was in this very room, in the very chair that John's sitting in, talking about the fact that he could not find housing in our community. We have a number of businesses and so that portion, I'm speaking to myself, but the business community, I go out and speak with the businesses on a regular basis. You have some of our small businesses like 12 North, which is a new marketing firm on mine at Ave. When I talked to them, what are your, some of your big challenges? They said, "We can't get workforce because they can't live in our community, they can't afford to." So when you talk about inflation and you talk about affordability, we also had, last night in a workshop across the hall, our Executive Director of the Auburn Housing Authority, who analyzes housing, this is what he's chosen his career to do, saying, "Our issue is supply and demand. While we also need workforce housing and low-income housing, our market rate housing costs have gone through the roof because the demand is so high and the supply is so low." So while we do need programs for workforce housing, this market is now becoming unattainable for people who have good jobs. When I went and spoke with Future Guard, PacGen, and AGRINs, as well as both of our hospitals, they named as their top issue for obtaining workforce as being housing. So I'm in favor of this on a personal basis, but also I believe I'm speaking in very general terms for the business community when it comes to the fact that we need housing. There are government programs that can create housing, but that housing is for low-income people. The best thing we can do as local government to make housing attainable is to open up more properties for development. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Hayes. I live at 172 Allen Avenue. First, I'll say again, thank you for serving. Serving the public isn't easy. And I thank you for continuing this dialogue. I think that time given has allowed us to better understand form-based zoning and also to reflect upon it a little bit, maybe apply it appropriately. I guess I have reflected, I have two concerns. And actually, I think before you, you may have notes that I made, but first, the proposed creates a new zone and we're calling it Traditional Neighborhood Development District without uniquely identifying the S, the Ps, and the Xs with respect to the uses. Instead, we're borrowing Matrix Column T-4.2, which is identified as a traditional downtown Certainly, you know, this 1,600-acre area that we're speaking of is not downtown. Secondly, instead of recognizing, you know, one large landmass as a cohesive zone, there really are three distinct growth bands that we've seen over decades. And each of these has characteristics that are, you know, for those particular areas definitely differentiate them from one another. With respect to the first band, the inner band, essentially, right now, it's considered a traditional Main Street neighborhood under a T-4.1. And if we move from Washington Street, Golf Street, it kind of goes out. I'd suggest we extend it to, you know, Western Avenue, but I think that needs to be changed to the T-4.2, which is a traditional downtown neighborhood. Going to the middle band, which really extends from Western Avenue, if you go out to the extension of Sheridan Avenue and Park Avenue, you could really get more into the traditional Main Street neighborhood or really the 4.1. I think when you get out beyond Park Avenue, it is totally different. I think that's the newer growth band that we've seen over the more recent decades. So you get into a more true suburban area. So to call that a--
Mr. Hayes, I apologize. You've reached your three minutes.
I will come back. Thank you.
If he stepped out of line, he can move to the back.
Oh, okay. Daniel King, I live on 526 Court Street, basically right at the top of the hill. I just, I'm just starting to understand what's going on with the whole development. I spent my whole life developing property and working on projects, so I understand it. I retired and moved to Auburn. I have a concern about the pervious and impervious surfaces as far as green space. You know, if you start building three-story complexes on these properties, then you have parking. Where's the green space? I just, you know, I haven't heard anything about that and I might have missed it. But I know there's five acres right above my house, right on the top of the hill. And for example, if that was to be developed with these current guidelines, the amount of water that's going to come off that, and there's already houses perimetered all the way around, you've got street, where's all the water going? So that's the kind of things that are kind of concerning about that. The second item, I live right on the street, the traffic is already unmanageable, especially with kids walking up from the school. Being retired, I can sit and watch the kids come and go during the day and stuff. And it's totally unsafe at this point. The speed, average speeds on Court Street are staggering. So I just hope that these items are being looked at on an individual basis and that the city doesn't become shortsighted because there's a, you know, shortage of houses. I understand everybody needs a place to live, but the long range, you know, five, 10 years out, what is this going to do to affect these neighborhoods? Those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Cleveland. I live at 183 Davis Avenue in Auburn. I've lived there for 37 years and I've lived in my entire adult life in the City of Auburn. I want to thank the Auburn Planning Board for the opportunity to present testimony regarding the proposed Court Street zoning proposal. However, because the time allowed to speak is so short, I will only be able to address a few of the concerns. I want to begin by stating that I support increasing housing opportunities for all economic groups, especially for lower-income families and individuals. However, the proposal before you makes substantial changes to huge area of existing residential neighborhoods consisting of more than 1,687 acres in nearly fully-developed neighborhoods, which consist mostly of single and two-family homes with one or two stories. In the proposed new district, the land use regulations that would be applied is the T-4.2 Form-Based Code. This approach is not consistent with the existing character of the neighborhoods affected and goes beyond the stated goal of simply creating additional housing opportunities. In my handout, which has been distributed, I have included copies of the 4.2 Traditional Downtown Neighborhood and the 4.1 Traditional Main Street Neighborhood codes that illustrate that the desired outcomes created by the density design and uses allowed in each of these two codes on these neighborhoods. Clearly, the 4.2 is written for downtown neighborhoods, not for residential neighborhoods, and is inconsistent with the existing character of the residential neighborhoods in the proposal. 4.2 is more consistent, but allows for extensive business development in residential neighborhoods. You'll see in my handout with the 4.1 and 4.2, it clearly illustrates the density that we're talking about if you use that code. Some of the conflicts and concerns as a result of the standards in this proposal are as follows. It assumes the 4.2 code is appropriate for the entire 1,687 acres. It is not, as you've already heard. The table of permitted and special exemption uses in 4.2 include more than 200 business uses in neighborhoods that are primarily residential. This includes restaurants with 30 or more seats, medical and dental clinic, and marijuana retail stores, name just a few. Further, there are no onsite parking requirements for any of the 200 allowed businesses. Residential dwellings are required to have only one parking space per dwelling unit, when we all know that there, when there are two or more licensed drivers in a dwelling, there will be a vehicle for each driver.
Mr. Cleveland, I apologize. You've exceeded your three minutes.
I have just a very short piece. May I take just a few more seconds?
Normally, we would ask that you would come back after everyone else has had a chance to finish, to make their comments, please.
I'll come back.
Thank you very much. We look forward to hearing from you.
Hold the place. I'll finish where I started.
All right.
Sharon Philbrook Bergeron, 23 Dexter Avenue, speaking as a resident of the affected area for 50 years. I have a few points to reiterate. First, there's no question that the rezoning and the neighborhood to grow the city from the inside out is smart. The recommendations on the Form-Based Code and changes to dimensional requirements are good ones. Second, the increasing density conforms to the comprehensive plan without adopting a 400% increase, the three to 16 units per acre. Eight units is also a marker in the comp plan and would be more suitable. Plus, folks that would like to build apartments could do so on vacant lots, they could still do it and it would not be, would just not be giant three-story buildings next to our two-story homes. Third, the commercial use recommendation is also extreme, is an extreme way to accomplish those objectives. Staff recommended the 242, but last meeting said they weren't married to it for loud uses, which would have enormous, which would enormously be, have, excuse me, have an enormous impact on our neighborhood. Why not the 4T1, the T-4.1 loud uses, which would better grow the city and be more in character with our neighborhood? It is my hope the planning board recommends capping the density units at eight and using the T-4.1 commercial use. Thank you all for your service. And if I could just leave with two questions, I was in the room next door and I, when you crosswalk the T-4.1 and the T-4.2, I did not hear you note that the retail specialty shops are automatically permitted in T-4.2, but are not, would require special exceptions in T-4.1. And I'd like to know if that's true and if a specialty pot shop is also in that use. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nancy Green. I live at 134 Granite Street, have lived here for 35 years. And I do not question at all that we need additional housing for people to live in Auburn. I, I think that that is almost a given, but I really question where that additional housing is going to be put. I agree with Mr. Harder when he mentioned that the infrastructure could build out from where it is and then build the buildings. And I say that because very honestly, in some of these old neighborhoods, the infrastructure, the, the electra, the whole grid is old. the, the electra, the, the whole grid is old. It, it is going to, you add, you add buildings to this, and it's going to be worse. I have heard for this time and last about the safety on Court Street in terms of children walking and in, and in terms of traffic. I've heard nothing today from the planning department that has addressed that need. And I can't understand yet, when Mr. Blaze said that a minimum five-foot setback would slow down traffic, I don't get that at all. Maybe you can explain it later after I'm done. So Court Street, I think, is an issue, a big issue. The Lake Street area, as well as several other areas, are really, are really a very dense area, as I mentioned last time, and I don't think it's realistic. The streets themselves are so crowded. I go back and forth from, from places, and right now, I cannot drive down the street, down Davis Avenue, because there are a lot of cars right in the street. There is, there is snow on the side. I cannot pass somebody. If there's a car there, I've got to wait for the guy to come back. So it's a small street. It's a crowded area. Finally, last time, we were told that with each additional unit, it only would, would only result in one-third child, according to what the planning director said. And, and I, I figured that up in the, that's going to be 700 kids. So I'm saying, you know, the Planning Board is important, the planning department is important, but where is the planning about some of these issues? The children, the streets, the infrastructure, we, it's all above, but where is it behind? How are we going to go forward with that?
Mrs. Green, I apologize. You've...
One, one sentence? Mr. Blaze said that it would be nice for people to sit on stoops, and it's a really nice place to live as a member...
Thank you.
...of, of the Lake Street area. That's already happening.
Good evening. Thank you for having the meeting. David Briggs, Jocelyn Street. Just a couple of echoes. The gentleman from Harris Ave. It would be a great thing for some of us on Jocelyn, Granite, Dexter to be able to make us conforming with smaller lot, because none of us, I think, actually qualify. Now, we're all legally non-conforming, and if we want to make any improvements, it's, it's quite the hoop jump. An agreement with those who've expressed some concern that this seems like a large land area to put a single zone across. The gentleman from the top of Court Street, once you cross over the hill, it's a whole different character than, than down below the hill. So I have some concerns with that. Along with a couple of concerns with, I take it we're not married to T-4.2 at this point. It might be something else. T-4.2 frontage setbacks, minimum five, maximum 15, I believe. If you tried to set a maximum like that on somebody who's building on a new lot, that might be awfully restrictive, so part of all of that. And I agree with some of the comments that have been made as to better defining, I guess, the, the commercial aspect of what can be in. I like having Heath codes right down. They're, they're lovely. I don't know how, if that could be misused under some of the new codes. So some concerns, some agreements. I'm glad you're all looking at it, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board. My name is Glenn Holmes. I live at 58 Morale Street in Buckfield. I am the Director of Business and Community Development for the city, and as part of my role, I oversee the Community Development Office, which administers HUD community development, block grant funds, home investment funds, lead hazard and healthy home funds, all programs targeted at residents and areas of our community that are at or below 80% of median income. With that in mind, we spent significant time and energy trying to work within these federal programs to assist our residents. I'm here this evening to speak directly to the issue of housing in our community. I was asked if we were in a housing crisis recently by staff. I instinctively responded by yes, but when they asked, how do I know? I had to take a pause and tell my head, get back to them. So I went and did some digging, and after doing that, I found that a clear definition of housing crisis is difficult to come by. So I looked at just crisis. And according to the Collins Online Dictionary, a crisis is a situation in which something or someone is affected by one or more serious problems. Then I looked to do, do we have what that is? And I feel we do. First, the cost of housing is rising faster than the household incomes are. Based on housing surveys, a one-bedroom apartment in Auburn in 2019 was averaging approximately $1,000, where today the average is $1,430, or a 41% increase. I don't know about everybody in this room, but my household income has not gone up 41% over the last couple of years. The total availability of housing does not meet the current need for our housing, in my opinion. I admit this number was much more difficult to get to, so I had to speak with people I trusted. I spoke with realtors, investors, developers, individuals moving into our community, and individuals selling their home. I can tell you across the board, the inventory of homes for sale is significantly lower than in 2019. We then looked at rentals and found the best number we could find were based on our residents using HUD housing vouchers. In 2019, the average time for a voucher holder to find an apartment that met the criteria was approximately 30 days. Currently, that is stretched out to 60 to 90 days, with many unable to find an apartment. I do admit this situation is twofold. One, the lower availability, but on top of that, even with a current voucher allowing $937 for a one-bedroom benefit, which according to HUD is 120% above the fair market rate, which obviously is inaccurate since we just said it's 100, $1,430. So based on the definition of a crisis being one or more serious problems affecting someone, I feel is clear this is a crisis. Adding more units will arguably work on both issues. If we have more units, we solve the supply issue, and if, with greater supply, history shows that rates will decline. This is not a magic bullet. It will take time, and that means some residents will continue to struggle, but as supply increases and rates fall, building will slow, and we'll start the process all over again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Spencer Dunn, 530 Court Street, speaking on behalf of myself. I am not naive enough to believe that this proposal will go through in any form other than how it is currently laid out by our city's administration. Despite reasonable compromises and amendments being offered in last month's meeting on this matter, it's clear this body has its marching orders. To reiterate, those proposals recommended amending the area in question from being rezoned to the Traditional Neighborhood Development District under our new comprehensive plan's streamlined zoning, to a Suburban Developmental District under our new comprehensive plan's streamlined zoning. The Traditional Neighborhood Development Districts will allow for up to 16 units per acre of any type of unit, a net 10 to 12 unit increase compared to our existing zoning. The Suburban Developmental District zoning will allow for up to eight units per acre of any type of unit to be built. This is still a two to four unit per acre increase compared to our existing and soon outdated zoning, urban residential, which allows up to four single-family units per acre or up to six multifamily units per acre. This amendment would allow for a reasonable increase in density in keeping with existing, and I might add, already-dense neighborhoods with their own traffic, maintenance, and parking problems. Fortunately for all of us, all of the new streamlined zone types have made setbacks sane again and in keeping with the natural setbacks that existed in our community and were built in our community long before we altered the zoning code that undoubtedly they were grandfathered into and before they were framed as legally non-conforming lots. Reclassifying this area as a Suburban Developmental District would affect little in the way of getting rid of bad setbacks, as the new ones are identical on side and front and different in the rear by about five feet, 15 for the Traditional, no, Traditional Neighborhood Development District and 20 for suburban. So fear not, although frankly, our city's codes should be flexible enough regardless to make exceptions for most properties as needed. It is absolutely unacceptable that any city code, regardless of its age, be unable to accommodate individuals' needs, particularly when it comes to space accessibility for those with extraordinary circumstances and needs. Furthermore, I understand the ability, the need to build, to infill and redevelop dens, density to return downtown to its original form, and it's a handy way to optimize space in utility-covered areas to maximize city revenue streams for maintenance and public services. However, rezoning very suburban areas en masse to even more dense levels, with state laws also being pushed, will create an environment where many parcels, even small ones, will be able to have multiple units on them. Let's be clear, these changes are likely not going to be used by already cash-strapped and house-poor families to build accessory dwelling units in their garages or sideyards to then be rented out to the general public to cover expenses or have passive income. Most homeowners would only make these changes to their parcels to accommodate direct family or close friends in dire straits. These changes will undoubtedly be taken advantage of by flippers, property investors, speculators, and developers looking to maximize their bottom lines or generate large passive income streams off of incomes of working people by retrofitting existing homes or parcels into multiple...
Mr. Dunn, I, I apologize. You've exceeded your three minutes.
Into multiple high-priced rentals that most workers here already cannot afford and will be marketed to high-income earners escaping in bills...
Mr. Dunn, I, I apologize. You've exceeded, I would absolutely encourage you to come back and finish once everyone else has had a chance to speak. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Judy Tyler. I live at 200 Davis Avenue. I appreciate this opportunity tonight for all of us to have an opportunity to hear more about what is proposed and more details. The magnitude and scope of these changes is just enormous, and there is an awful lot to take in, to try to digest, understand, and be open to some of the many, many countless ramifications that we'll be facing if any of that goes through. Neither 4.1, I believe it's called, or 4.2 seems to describe our neighborhood at all. And I'm talking generally about the neighborhood of Park Avenue, Gamage, and Court. It's already a wonderful, wonderful place to live. We don't need to make it into something. It already exists. In fact, it's a classic example of a neighborhood in an area that other places in the United States have tried to emulate and create in their own places where they have huge problems. In fact, we looked throughout Maine to try to find another place where this traditional neighborhood development has been implemented in a city. We were not able to find a place in Maine where that's happened. We also were not able to find anywhere in New Hampshire. It has happened, apparently, in, in major dense population areas throughout California and Florida, and of course elsewhere. So we're just trying to catch up and understand all this. We weren't part of the two or three, or as some people in New Auburn have told us, as many as seven years discussions on changing zoning, and there's a lot to take in. I also am going to question communication as hard as it's been tried to be communicated, and we have received a second mailing. The title was called Court Street. That was communicated. It was communicated that it was about Court Street, and you couldn't really make out. It was generally, you know, the, the purple color is a, a large area, but no streets were specified. So the impression could have been made in people's receiving this, that it didn't impact them because it was Court Street. The name Traditional Neighborhood Development was then enlarged, but for someone that doesn't understand that those are actual zoning-specific terms with definitions, would conclude that traditional means the same, solid, proven, familiar, long-established, sticking to or adhering to those things that are already familiar to people. And this, and these changes are not familiar. They, they are very different.
Ms. Tyler, I, I apologize.
Thank you.
You've exceeded your three minutes.
I have many other concerns. Thank you very much.
You are, you are welcome to continue to share those once everyone else has had a chance to speak. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. My name is Dennis Bergeron from 23 Dexter Avenue. Thanks to the staff for their work on this. Thanks to the board for their service. I have two recommendations for the board. The first is maybe you'd like to take this back and workshop it with the staff and paint it with a finer brush, as suggested by the comments of Mr. Hayes, who provided the reasons for that. I thought, I think that was very eloquently done. A second recommendation for the board might be to take a step back, and if you needed to move forward to do something, take the T-4.1 zoning recommendation. And in the comments of Mr. Cleveland and my wife, those things were pretty well laid out, why you, why T-4.1 is much more befitting for this area than T-4.2. And advice from somebody who was on the Planning Board for many, many years, if you don't want to see something happen, don't put it as a permitted use, even as, even as improbable as it might be, you could see it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Klemmick. I live in the Amberly Way Briar Cliff Knoll Development across from the middle school. I'm also part-owner of Acreage on Court Street and someone who would like to bring additional housing options to the Court Street urban residential area. I am a 41-year resident of Auburn. My husband and I have five children. We are a part of the Fairview School and Edward Little Community, and the future of Auburn is very important to our family. You've heard from several concerned residents tonight because it is our job to protect our community and to protect our homes to the best of our ability, but the majority of us are not subject matter experts when it comes to zoning requirements, land use policy, city economics, or Auburn's comprehensive plan. We may not understand how this very change can contribute to solutioning for a lot of the issues that we've heard here tonight. For example, affordable housing. We all know that due to the growing demand and lack of supply, we've seen a significant increase in multifamily market rates, and yes, new development would likely bring mirrored rates for those newly constructed buildings. However, it would also force existing multifamily rates down and more in line with where they should be in order to remain competitive. Traffic Safety and Infrastructure. As residents, we don't necessarily know that studies previously conducted support the addition of 2,000 additional units or 6,000 more residents, or that Auburn's been working towards implementing plans to redirect and decrease traffic congestion within those more heavily trafficked areas such as Court Street. We likely don't understand things like tax increment financing and how future development within TIF districts can be used to finance public infrastructure improvements like street repairs, traffic control, and parking. Concerns with Density. As residents, we're thinking that a 16-unit building could be placed on a one-acre parcel, when in reality, requirements like setbacks, green space, and parking would only allow for this kind of development within larger and more appropriate parcels of land. This is why we rely on the expertise of city staff, the Comprehensive Plan Committee, Planning Board, and City Council. This is why, throughout development of the future land use plan, these very concerns were carefully considered in order to determine appropriate growth areas within the city. As residents, sometimes we need to trust in those expertise, even though we may not understand it, and those in position to make recommendations or decisions hopefully will stand true to their commitment to embracing opportunity and mindful growth, which is what this is. So I would ask that the Planning Board do just that and provide a recommendation in favor of this zone amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris Susie, 52 Sunset Ave, just speaking for myself. I just want to say I'm not really on board for having the residential area expanded like that. I mean, I moved out of in-town, so I have a little more, a less busy area around me, and I'm concerned if they start, you know, they're able to take some of the land and put larger apartment buildings on there and stuff, that increases the traffic through my neighborhood. So selfish as it may be, I'm just not for it. That's all I want to say.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Reggie Droscher, 450 Court Street, speaking for myself and my wife.
Hi, Reggie Droscher, 450 Court Street, speaking for myself and my wife. Picked up on three things tonight, there's so many moving parts around this, it's hard to grasp what's going on sometimes. I think you folks did a great job in your presentation, and you made it sound like the 4.2 is not much different than the 4.1. To that, I say, well, if it's not that much different, why do we need to do it? Okay. And you said that there's things out there that we could use to stop some planning if we didn't think it was the right thing to do, and like Dennis said just a few minutes ago, is I wouldn't allow those opportunities for those things to come up in the first place, and you wouldn't have to use those stopgaps. And the third thing is, we live on Court Street, we have over an acre, and from what I'm hearing, I could build a 16-unit, three-story complex on my lot, which would be a disaster for Court Street, and the neighborhood would look totally different. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak? I apologize, gentlemen, because I know I've got a note to invite you back up, but I know that there are some folks who have been patiently waiting on Zoom. And also, Mr. Hayes, are you indicating that you're going to check the other room? Is that what you were saying? Oh, okay, yes, okay, thank you. I thought I was going to let you know. Thank you, but it's certainly not your responsibility, we can ask staff to do that. So, all right, this time, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to?
Yes, we have, we have three people waiting. First up is Kate Jacobs. Go ahead, Kate.
Hi, my name is Kate Jacobs. I live at 88 Coburn Street, and I'm speaking for myself tonight. I want to thank you for this meeting. I heard a lot of thoughtful questions from the board that addressed several of the points that were brought up at the last meeting. I still have not really been swayed in my position of, with my concerns from those questions, though you did answer quite a few of them. What I did not hear is specific to a point I brought up last time and several other people did too, and that is that 16-unit calculation. Several people, including myself, have said that is just too high. I did not hear anyone discuss whether that could be lowered. Eight was written in the report, I believe, or the presentation as another possibility, and I don't know why that isn't being discussed, that seems a lot more reasonable. What I've also heard tonight is a lot of assumptions. They probably won't change that neighborhood, they probably won't build that business. Why would we be making these assumptions while giving them a path, anyone a pathway to test those and to do those things that you don't want and are assuming won't happen? What the last couple of people have said I agree with, why allow that in the beginning if you plan to just fall back on a way to prevent it later? There's also another couple of little things, again, that you've brought up tonight that, you know, they won't change that neighborhood, it's already a little bit too dense. I happen to live in the multifamily zone, my property for some reason is the one single family lumped into multifamily in my neighborhood. And you yourself said tonight, oh, it's more dense up there. That's right, it's already more dense here, why are we allowing it to get denser? Several of these neighborhoods are almost at capacity, so I don't know why they're being included here. So I'd really urge you, again, to step back, look at that calculation, that 16, think about going to eight or something just a little bit more reasonable. That's my main hang-up on this. Again, I could really benefit from this, I have extra lot, I have an extra lot, it's nice to have the flexibility to do something with it, but I'm really hung up on that 16 and the amount that you're proposing be allowed. And thank you again for your attention, I really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great, next up is Jason Lerman. Go ahead, Jason.
Thank you, everybody, for sharing their concerns and comments. And just a couple of things, I'd actually put a question before there, did it come up okay?
I apologize, we in the room are not able to see the question that you posted.
Okay, I'll go ahead and speak it real quick. For clarity and reference to the setbacks, when we're talking setbacks, because of the roadwork that was done to Park Avenue already, are we talking from the center line back to the property, or are we talking from the edge of the road back to the property? So I was looking for specific clarity on that particular piece we talked about earlier. And for my two other parts, real quick, historical buildings, how are we going to address those for any development in any future to protect preservation of historical buildings? And number three, growing pains are going to be a process of this, but please, hopefully everybody can stay open-minded. And with that, hopefully my drive-through times were better than McDonald's, that's all I've got to say, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
With a little bit of humor.
And lastly, we have Margaret Meyer. Go right ahead, Margaret.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Planning Board for sending out that second notice. The picture was much larger, I actually could see the street names. But I would like to say also that I agree with a former speaker that when it came out as a Court Street redistricting, I don't really, oh, I'm sorry, I live at 27 Hillcrest Street, off of Gamage Avenue in between Shepley and Oakland Street. And in my neighborhood, they are all one family, on small 50- to 100-foot lots, with maybe a couple of properties that are larger. And I don't have any property on Court Street that I want to develop, so I'm speaking strictly as a homeowner who loves her neighborhood. And when I hear about the commercial uses that could be put in, the businesses, and I agree with the last woman who said the assumptions we're making, that people won't do it, I don't understand why we're having to do a full neighborhood like this to change neighborhoods that are already dense, instead of looking outward, going down that hill, looking at properties that are larger. And also, I wonder if those setback problems were created because roads were expanded or enlarged, widened? And why can't that just be a part of the change that you say, let's just make that setback this, instead of including it with all these other things, allowing 16 units, allowing business in neighborhoods that are family neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods? There are ways to address the housing without taking away from our neighborhoods. And I do thank you for all your work and that you did not pass it last time. I really appreciate that, and I hope you will consider what everyone is saying here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
No, Mr. Chair, that's it.
Is there anyone else in the room who would like to address the board?
Good evening. Thank you for your time. It's been a long night and sure a long process for all of us. I am Elizabeth Dunn, I live at 530 Court Street. I have lived in Auburn for 32 years, but my husband and his family have lived here for 250. My concern is selfish, and I will say that right up front. We have a very large parcel of land across the street from us that has currently sold. I have no idea what the plans are to develop it, I'm a little afraid to think about it. I also have another parcel of land that abuts us, right on our family line, which is about five or six acres. And again, with that amount of land, I don't want to think about what could go there. Again, a lot of people this evening have been talking about the character of their neighborhoods. We live in an area where it is 95% single-family, double-family homes, and I would like to think that the acreage available on Merrill Hill will not be turned into large multifamily apartment complex-style housing. Small residential subdivision, I would be perfectly happy with, but anything else doesn't really fit that part of our town, or our city, I guess, small-town city. There are lots of open spaces in Auburn where we could definitely handle working towards helping the housing issue for all economic people. The people that live out of town, our own planners, don't live in Auburn. They live on, in smaller towns with large lots of land, and they're not thinking about putting these complexes in their yard. Please consider what it will do for all of us, and please think this evening and last time. There seems to be a lot more trepidation and concern among the Auburn residents than support for either of these two plans. I would recommend that you just take a step back, take a little more time, and really think about what the residents need, want, desire. How do we make us all happy? We need to think about how the compromise can work. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, I believe you're up.
I think we got through two of those growth bands, we just got into maybe the third band, and I guess it gets back to the difficulty of recognizing that outer portion is a traditional development district. I guess, and I guess I'm beginning to feel that form-based zoning codes really has come out of more the urban environment. What we're missing is moving from kind of a residential more into a suburban area. We don't have a code or a zone, and I guess I'm suggesting that we need to create a T-4.0, and that beyond Park Avenue, that instead of calling it a development district, make it a traditional residential growth neighborhood. It is primarily residential, we want infill. And when it comes to, you know, business, I guess I feel totally different. You know, to me, T-4.0, which should be developed, should be almost exclusively residential in character. Retail and office uses should be more clustered to create activity centers, where various uses support each other and create a magnetic energy. Scattered uses are self-defeating and actually compromise our downtown interest in development. I think we're only allowing, I can agree with home occupation, but when you create a small restaurant, a small retail shop, isolated, I think you're only bringing forth failure. Because at some point in time, either it will be successful, but they have to move, and then you're left with a retail building that then has to be converted somehow. But again, our downtown, what we need there are those small businesses clustering together to create an energy to attract a lot of different interests into a variety of activities that are there. So I think that, to me, it's totally self-defeating to entertain the idea of having scattered, small, retail-type activities. So I have presented a matrix, and that's what we're missing, is that right from the beginning, my first concern was we were introducing a zone that we truly did not have in the matrix. And I feel that introducing this 4.0, which again, I go back, I think form-based zoning, it seems to me it really came out of urban settings, so it doesn't really consider the more suburban character of the land, especially beyond Park Avenue.
Thank you. Mr. Cleveland, you're up.
I want to just finish my points. Point six is that the proposed zoning changes allows for a density of 16 dwelling units per acre, twice as much as the current permitted density of eight dwelling units per acre. This increase in density is too large and inconsistent with the existing character of the neighborhoods. The zoning changes you have been asked to adopt will change the affected neighborhoods for generations to come. I respectfully ask that you table the proposal before you and take the time required to carefully review all the aspects of this zoning proposal and all of the concerns that you've heard this evening, and make the changes necessary to address those concerns that have been raised. Otherwise, what is the purpose of public input at public hearings? Incidentally, I also want to say that I do support Bob Hayes' concept that a proposal to create a new, say, 4.0 code for the so-called Court Street neighborhood that fits that character would be a better desired outcome. I think by taking various aspects that do fit and meshing them with what currently exists there, that you could come up with a good proposal that would work well, that would encourage infill and additional housing in the area that is consistent with that neighborhood and constructive, constructive to maintaining that historic housing area. So I encourage you to take the necessary time it would take to do that and come back with a proposal that fits the neighborhood better. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
Hi, I'm Brian Smith, I live at 11 Harris, I spoke a little bit earlier, but I kind of saved some for now, too, because I don't want to go over my time. I just want to say, I think we also have to look at the long-term health of our economy when we come to these decisions, and I'm going back to my point of concerns over large multifamily developments, which seems to be a lot of people chomping at the bit, trying to take advantage of this opportunity. I just want to say, if you look at the long-term economic impacts, I mean, at my house alone, I bought my house in July of 2019, and it's not even three years later. And my home, I recently got appraised, it appreciated by 50%, which is alarming in a way, but you got to see what that did for me, living in a single-family home, being in my 20s, it added a lot to my worth, really, my net worth, and that's really good for the economy here, is, you know, having that sort of equity available to someone like myself, I can then put it back into the economy. But if you develop hundreds of multifamily units and having people my age, you know, having kids, everything else, already being strapped for cash, and then making me pay $1,500 a month for a two-bedroom apartment, I'm gaining no equity, and I have nothing else to put back into the local economy. So I think that's something to really consider here when we think about what we want to develop with. I think we need to really focus on those one- and two-family homes where people can gain equity over time, and instead of putting their equity into the pocket of a few people through large multifamily developments, and I think that's something that we really, I haven't really heard the points of, because I've heard everyone talk about how convenience stores could be great for these neighborhoods, and I agree, and all the other parts about this, the setbacks, you know, the smaller developments, but no one really seems to be addressing the large multifamily developments, other than people who want to develop them themselves, to make money for themselves, or by just saying, "Trust us, we won't let that happen." And I just don't think that's good enough for a lot of us here. And if you listen to the concerns of everyone, we're all, this is what we're concerned about, is just large apartment buildings. And I think for the long-term economy, it's going to be a negative, it's going to get us housing in the short term, but it's going to be a negative impact, because no one's building equity. And that's what we really need, is people to come here with their families, build equity in a home, have that money to put back into the local economy. So I would just ask everyone to look at the implications here and listen to everyone who's talking, just that those developments don't belong in these neighborhoods, and not only does it affect our home values, and not only does it affect the character, but it also affects the economic welfare of people moving to Auburn. So in the long term, if we have more people, it doesn't mean we're going to have more money to put back into the economy if we just make it rent instead of actual home equity. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Spencer Dunn, again, 530 Court Street, Auburn, Maine, speaking on behalf of myself. I personally would like to clarify some things about supply and demand. With a little thought experiment, I also would like to just state that part of my degree was in economic and public policy, so while I am certainly no expert at the age of 23, I am fairly well-versed and do have some foundational knowledge in economic incentives and behaviors and motives in multiple sectors of our economy. Let's say, in this thought experiment, that we wall off or vacuum-seal Auburn, nobody in, nobody out, a closed system, then say we snap our fingers and add 1,000, 1,500, 2,000 units of all types, homes, townhomes, condos, tiny homes, apartments, what have you. Now, with no outside forces and a fixed number of residents now competing for even more housing options, this dynamic would theoretically, emphasis on theoretically, exert some downward pressure on prices and rents, though to what extent landlords, developers, and other interests would want to take away, take a hit to their bottom lines is incredibly up for debate. The catch here, of course, is that Auburn does not exist in- that Auburn does not exist in some isolated environment, unassailable by outside forces, incentives, and pressures. It is part of a complex and interconnected economic web, and exists with an economic hierarchy of which is by no means the center. Try though we might, it will never be an economic powerhouse in the same sense that Boston or Portland are, or New England. We need to be able to think creatively and solve our problems beyond borrowing language and principles from cities and metro areas vastly larger than ours, with much larger tax bases and even more perverse financial incentives as ours, and expect them to map onto our significantly smaller community in any coherent way. Most major cities and their pressured suburbs have been fighting tooth and nail to implement principles of updated urbanism since the late 80s and early 90s, and into the early aughts. In a delayed response to the failures of urban renewal that bulldozed dense and historic areas across the country, including much of Auburn's own historic downtown, and its large and dense mills and shops, theaters, factory buildings, and dense middling-sized development to make room for Denny's, an Office Max, and more parking lots. We can and should make changes to density per acre across all land uses in our city while protecting and considering the impacts of expanding and encouraging rent-seeking and speculative profit-seeking development and behavior in our city, which has largely failed to deliver affordability in the short term or long term for any market and anyone who really needs it. And at best, has slowed down the rate of change of price increases to a barely manageable level for middle and low-income areas, of which Auburn undoubtedly is, when that housing, a decade or two decades down the road, filters down to them. Please carefully consider the trade-offs of dense, multi-levelable, purchasable condos or townhomes versus dense rental properties, and where that money and capital ends up and how it gets spent, in our community or in expanding someone's portfolio. Encouraging the development of extractive assets that will siphon off large sums of capital from higher earners moving into the area transitionally because they cannot afford or locate options nearer to their jobs, or low-income earners with few other choices, is not a recipe for a fair, affordable, sustainable, or equitable community that we hope to build in Auburn under the last two comprehensive plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board? Seeing none, I'd seek a motion to close the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? I did say that we would try to answer some questions. I noticed Mr. Duval taking some notes. Would you like to address some of those questions to the staff?
Sure, I will do the best I can. Hopefully, other people took notes as well. So, first question is about density. So, the 16 units per acre applies to basically lots that are an acre or larger. Is that correct? How, can you, can you tell me how those density, because form-based code does not specify lot size. So how does, do those density numbers interact with lot size?
We looked at a few examples in prep for the meeting, and it doesn't require that you have an acre to develop a lot, but you would be, that, that number, that ratio, 16 per acre, would be prorated based on your lot size. A 5,000-square-foot lot, 5,000 or 6,000 square-foot lot with a three-unit comes out right around that number, at a density of around 16, 17.
Okay. Got it. So it applies to the multifamily, essentially, is what I'm hearing.
I could pull that lot to get the...
I do want to add a little piece to that. You know, the acreage, 16 units per acre is really, in a lot of cases, it's going to be difficult to do, even in multifamily, because you've got a parking requirement. So for each dwelling unit, you have to supply at least one parking spot. So not only do you have to meet the, you know, your, your total impacts for your lot, but you also have to supply the parking. And then for every four units, you have to supply another parking spot for additional space. So it's not, we're not just looking specifically, I know we focused on buildings, but we have to, we're going to focus on what the open space requirement is, the 10%. Or if we're going to look at this under subdivision law, what's the requirement under recreation, and how we, how are we going to make sure that we get the recreation piece in there? And then, and obviously, the parking, and then the building, and then the roads. So we look at, we may look at a nine-acre, you know, and look at it and say, well, that you could put 140 units in there. But once you start putting in the circulation, the parking, and the building, you can't get that density. I don't, I don't believe you can get that density. You know, typically, when I did a lot of site, site work as working for a civil engineering firm, and as the master planner for the Guard in my previous jobs, site circulation was 35% of the lot. So, and that included parking and roads and assembly areas and things like that. So the building itself and the densities is hard to really nail when it comes down to looking at this. And each site is site-specific. We got to take not only the parking and the circulation into consideration, but you also have to take stormwater control, right? So most of the time, we're dealing with stormwater when you have over an acre of impervious area, and we've got to conserve space to treat stormwater. So that's usually a pond. So we're taking away space there. In addition to that, you've got to look at site considerations like slopes. Typically, you know, we're not going to construct in areas over 20%. And between the 8% and 20% construction costs go way up. And then existing wetlands, you know, are they hydraulically connected to a stream? Are they wetlands of special significance? Those are very expensive. All those items need to be addressed in an individual site as we look at them, available in this open space that we have in this, in this area. It's not every single acre equals 16 units per acre. It is a total, you've got to look at it holistically as what the development can handle, what the parcel could handle. Some of the site restrictions might be sightline distance for road entrances and curb cuts. You know, there's all kinds of items that you have to analyze to get a project through to make it work. And I don't necessarily think that, maybe in the best-case scenario on some of these smaller lot sizes, where I think Eric even showed some of the existing ones, we're over, because the lot's so small, and there's three, three units, we're over that 16 acres per unit because it's so small. But the bigger lots, there's so much other stuff that you have to consider, that it's hard to nail that down specifically in every site that's developed. And you would have to look at that on a case-by-case basis.
I think, just to put it, I was just going to offer, just to put it in context, this was the lot I was thinking of that we had looked at the density on, 399 Court Street. It's around 7,500 square feet, three units. That lot developed in the way that it's currently developed is 17.6 units per acre. The next-door lot, 3 Jocelyn Street, single-family home, 50 by 109, that lot, if you replicated that to the point of an acre, is 7.7 units per acre. So both of those are, you know, more dense than what's allowed today, non-conformally with respect to setbacks. And, and just as an example, the 399 Court Street is more dense than what would be allowed at a 16-unit per acre.
Thank you. Mr. Burton?
When you mentioned, that's when we discussed last month about how the lot size and the parking requirements would be a factor, that was before this part where it says that the parking may be provided by the municipality or private parking resources within 1,000 feet. How would, would that still be, act as a limiting factor if they could say that there is, that one of their parking units is not in the area? Because as a lot of discussion this afternoon, the parking on the streets would be a big concern.
Yeah, so certainly not parking in the, public parking is not considered on the street. So that's, that's not a consideration. It's individual lots that the city owns that we have developed as parking. So, for example, you're right, parking garage would be one. I can think of others. In North Auburn, where there, the city had acquired land, they used community development block grant money to establish public parking there. And in that particular case, that would be public parking within 1,000 feet. There may not, there may not be a lot of available lots that is public parking that are in, in this particular 1,600 acres. But I can tell you that in existing 4.2, there is, there is opportunity there for, to utilize public parking for potential development.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Duval, do you mind if I ask a question that's related to this?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Smith from our public comment brought up 133 Lake Street. Can we take a peek at that real quick? This is an extraordinary lot for the neighborhood. I don't think it mirrors the others. And we talk about, when we look at just the acreage, now, we also have topographical issues, slope and things, perhaps wet wetlands. But I wonder if you can comment on this parcel with its limited access to the back acreage, whether this could be developed, or does it stand as is?
So, the owner of that front house would have to want to, you know, obviously demo that. To build a road, right, so in the city alone for site development, to build a road, there is no differentiation between a city road and a private road. So the standards are the same. It's, you know, you have to provide that 50-foot right-of-way, and the road width is always the same, 24 feet, essentially. So that in itself is, is a limiting factor in that particular case, where getting access to that back lot would be very problematic without acquiring additional land from, from a butters. So that, so that's one. Then, secondly, under the Natural Resources Protection Act, we're looking at specifically streams in this particular case. If it comes up on this map, that means it's under the definition of the DEP under NRPA, it has to run six months out of the year, be depicted on a seven-and-a-half-minute series map, which this is the, essentially, the baseline information. So therefore, you're going to have to keep a 75 or 25-foot setback from that stream. So again, minimizing the amount of land that's available for development. We're looking at slopes. I'd have to do some, some math in terms of rise over run, but we're, as you can see, the contour lines are very steep. It looks like a decent transition in elevation there of probably 40 to 50 feet difference in elevation over a short run, making that increase, you know, probably somewhere, you know, I'm doing math on the top of my head, but between 12 and 20%, limiting development. So there's, there is some site constraints to this particular site. And the actual accessibility is really limited without acquiring additional property. And that's, I think that's the biggest limiting factor in this particular case. In addition to that, I would assume that there's wetlands associated with that stream that, that don't, the layer that we're looking at would depict what's under the National Wetlands Inventory. And that's high level, that's 10,000 feet wetlands that come up on mapping at this level. If you were to develop that site, if that was something that was to be presented to the planning board, you would have to have a wetland delineation. And then, obviously, that, anything over 4,300 square feet would under, again, fall on NRPA and potentially limit the amount of development that could happen on the site. And again, anything over an acre, we're dealing with stormwater, we got to set, we got to set land aside. You know, I worked with engineers for 15 years of my career. They don't like setting ponds on slopes. Just doesn't make sense. So cut and fill is going to be very expensive in this particular case. Again, limiting the amount of space available for development.
So when we look at the 1687 acres, I mean, the actual amount of acreage that's prime for this type of development, do we have a grasp of what development possibilities could really be? Because what you're saying here is that this, what is it, 2-point-something acres, 2.33?
2.3.
Is really off the books. Out of the 1687, it might be included in this acreage, but really not something you can count on to be developed in the future.
It's, it's a very small piece of land that could be developed. It would seem that this would be a good fit for, you know, what's already in place, where you could put another ADU in, in the back lot, where you give, you know, a sibling, or an older parent, or a younger child, a place to build their own home, their single-family home, or duplex or something like that in the back. But that, that would be the limiting ability for this particular parcel. The return on investment just wouldn't work. It would be retaining walls everywhere, and it just doesn't make sense for a developer to spend that kind of money in this particular site.
There's, there's four units on the lot. My guess is it probably wouldn't make economic sense to buy this piece of land over a vacant piece, demolish a building.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Duval.
So, the next thing that came up had to do with permitted uses. There was a specific call-out to marijuana, whether or not a marijuana retail establishment would be allowed. But I think there were other questions about creating a more detailed list of permitted uses. Can you speak to that? The benefits and the...
T4.1 allows specialty shops as a special exception. T4.2 allows specialty shops as a permitted use. I would think like the, a small retail store, a shop that sold jewelry or watches, something like that, as a specialty shop. Age-restricted retail is where marijuana shop would be categorized. And that's a special exception in both zones. So I mean, that's a, that's a great point, that that's probably not the area we would want to have that type of business.
Thank you. Did you say that's not the type of area you'd want that kind of business?
I, I would guess that most of the neighborhoods would object to that, especially off of the arterial.
Okay, thank you. Next question, there was a lot, there were a number of people who spoke about traffic speed on Court Street. That, that is very high, up in that area right there. It doesn't directly have to do with this change, although putting more people up there would. How would you go about slowing traffic on Court Street? Are there plans in the works to actually do that?
There, there has been talk, a lot over the years, and some things done to slow traffic. I mean, from the middle school in town is all 25, from right about the middle school, I believe. And then from the middle school out to Minut Avenue is 35. There's no immediate plans to change that. I think 25 is certainly a reasonable speed. We could certainly talk to PD about more enforcement details. I know that they do monitoring and traffic enforcement on those roads. I also know that during the COVID period, there was an avoidance of individual traffic stops, and they saw a market increase in speeding incidents throughout the country, really. And that was, Auburn was no different. But I know they're back out there enforcing speed limits.
One of the, we're working on Court Street traffic improvements downtown. One of the concepts that's being explored is people use Court Street to travel through Auburn and into Lewiston and beyond. Because it's the fastest route, one of the options might be to look at, going below 25 is unlikely for a speed limit, but maybe expanding that 25 zone to include the area beyond. The middle school to Minut Avenue would encourage the through-
The middle school to Minut Avenue would encourage the through travelers to stay on Minut Avenue. Discourage them through traffic on Court Street. It's not a definite, but that's one of the options that's being looked at.
Great, thank you.
If you don't mind, I'd just like to parlay off of that. It was another question that a woman had around traffic and slowing down traffic. So her question was, how does the five-foot setback actually slow traffic down?
Yeah, so in areas where you want to slow traffic down, you really want to, and I think we're doing this, we're trying to do this on Court Street in particular from, say, Goff all the way down to the bridge in the downtown. So, and Eric talked about that area is, you know, people wanting to get to Lewiston and it's really, you know, people want to travel fast and they want to get someplace. And it's not necessarily our downtown in Auburn. But we really want to slow them down there. And one is presenting a road diet. And what a road diet is, is essentially potentially maybe, and we have some challenges with this, it being a a travel corridor that DOT kind of has a say on it, but eliminating a lane and squeezing the traffic down, and this is the same thing with that five-foot setback. These principles are the same. If you can think about yourself in a vehicle and you you always see the case where, you know, we've got parallel parking cars here and then you may even have a UPS truck and it's tight. There's no other people around you, right? But everything gets squeezed down and there might be, or there may be somebody unloading something and you slow down, everything gets tighter. As you put buildings closer to the road, it gives a sense of not as much space. So emotionally, the theory is that it slows traffic down. The same thing we're doing on Court Street where we're where we're proposing to put parallel parking, remove a lane, put parallel parking in and squeeze that lane down so that it feels tighter and people slow down and they pay attention. When you have things that are around you, like the kind of the explanation that I was giving you about the UPS driver Pepsi truck driver, you know, loading you know, some material to a store nearby, you slow down, right? That squeezing effect makes you pay attention more. It makes you slow down. So that's where the five-foot setback is. It's a way, when you put that together with a sidewalk, that's a way to slow traffic down and it's that squeezing effect that hopefully people start to look more around and be more conscious of their driving rather than trying to get from point A to point B as quickly as they can.
I think we heard that in one of the comments tonight about Davis Avenue, that the on-street parking makes it so that somebody had to wait to go around a parked car with an oncoming car. All of those things, they make you uncomfortable, but they make you slow down. It's part of urban street design is to make people drive slower.
So I just have a couple more ones that I took notes on anyway, and I think they're quick hitters. The setbacks, where's that measured from?
It's measured from the property line.
From the property line, so it's not from the center of the road?
It's not from the center of the road or the edge of the pavement. It's from the actual property line.
If we zoom in on Orchard, here's the edge of the paved part of Orchard. Here's the front property line behind the sidewalk.
Got it. Thank you. And the last one that I picked up, what impact would this have on historical buildings?
So if the property is still under, you know, the State Historic Preservation Commission or Preservation Office, or wherever you want to call them, you still have to, if you're going to do any changes to that home, you still have to basically meet the State Historic Preservation Office requirements. It's been my experience where, you know, some of that stuff without tax credits, it really limits some of the redevelopment of some of those parcels. It can make it more difficult. But they would have to still adhere to those requirements. And that would be, you know, something that the city staff, we would be involved in to make sure that they and then present it to the planning board and make sure that they're meeting those State Historic Preservation Office requirements. It wouldn't change any of those historic requirements, as long as it's registered under the registry.
Alright, thank you.
And in some cases, if that historic building was built to the historic character of a lot of these neighborhoods, it might even allow more flexibility for replacing pieces in conformance with that character.
Okay. Mr. Chair, that's all. Those are all the notes I had.
Did anyone have any other significant questions they feel been skipped?
Yes. Are there plans around supporting infrastructure sidewalks and things?
Much of the area has sidewalks. There are not specific plans to add sidewalks in places that we don't have.
And the development out by BJ's, part of the development requirements were to extend sidewalks. Would that be something that would be introduced for certain projects?
I think it's something that would be looked at on a case-by-case basis, but especially if you get to that three units in a five-year period, then as a subdivision, it's absolutely part of the review.
Growing up, I lived next door to a seamstress. Nobody knew about it except for the neighborhood. She couldn't hang a shingle. In today's world, I'd find it very handy to find a seamstress. My hunch is renting space in a commercial zone area would be problematic, but hanging a shingle outside their house might work. The question was raised, is there a clamoring for additional small business space in this zone?
No, and we really haven't seen, as I mentioned, we've really only seen one that I can think of in the existing T four-two district. So it's not a huge demand. But many of those businesses happen under our home occupation standards.
Can I ask for clarification on that? Because I know that there are going to be lots of people that think that T four-two is new as in within a year or two kind of new. How long has the T four-two zone existed in the city?
I think the first adoption was twenty-seventeen or twenty-eighteen, and then there was an expansion after that. I can show you where it's existed for at least three years.
So in that three years, you can think of one business that would have that was allowed by a special exception prior, but now didn't need that?
So it was allowed as a home occupation before, which comes with some additional limitations compared to a business that's permitted in the zone. But we use the T four-two standard instead because it was more permissive.
Okay, so you haven't actually seen any new commercial development that was not already allowed?
I can't think of any in the T four-two that have happened during that period.
Okay, thank you.
One question was, if I missed it, I'm sorry, the specialty pot shop permitted? Yeah, it's a permitted use, but it would require going to the to the planning board.
Special exception.
Special exception. Okay, under both? Yes, that's correct. Four-two and four-one. Okay. There was a question raised about the sixteen-unit calculation being too high. Have we not considered the eight units per acre? Can you comment on the driving force behind that?
There was a lot of discussion at the comp plan about how we grow from our core outward. And then as we kind of defined those areas where over time, we've made decisions about different densities by having the zoning that we have in place, there was a lengthy discussion and the sixteen units per acre was recommended as per areas where water and sewer is either available or could be made available. And the urban residential is one of those areas where the majority of that land either has it available or it's within reach if somebody wanted to pay for an extension. The next tier out, the suburban residential is what was recommended at eight units per acre. You don't have to be, you know, there's flexibility. Not every area within that that zone recommended by the comp plan has to be treated exactly the same. But I would think some continuum within that area would comply with the ordinance. So we're getting eight units, you know, at the at the core of it, but maybe the very edges are a transition to that suburban residential eight units per acre.
I can talk a little bit about that as well in terms of the process. As staff, we asked the Comprehensive Plan Committee, are we sure we want this? This is a big change. And we, my knee-jerk reaction was we were hesitant, but this is what we, you know, this is what we got for feedback. So, you know, we're moving it forward. But in addition to that, we did, correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, but I think we did three public outreach community outreaches in the senior community center and we laid these numbers out specifically. We were very specific in those numbers to get additional public feedback. And then again, based on all that feedback, we landed still at sixteen units per acre. So, you know, this is what was written in the comp plan, approved by the planning board and then approved by the council. So these are pretty much are, you know, for me, it's, you know, this is kind of our directive. So that's where we, you know, where we kind of landed on that and specifically the process, you know, from my perspective over the last year.
And then the other piece of that is one of the major goals of the comp plan is trying to reduce the number of overall zoning districts that we have in going through the existing ones. I think with the exception of possibly being more permissive on the business side, the T four-two was the closest one that would deliver around sixteen units per acre. You probably need that third story as compared to T four-one on a lot of lots with some limitations to get to sixteen units per acre. But I think it's certainly with marijuana shops, that's not something we talked about. Without a specific limit on the size of commercial uses, I think it's it's more permissive commercially than maybe what was envisioned, but it hits, I think it hits the density that was envisioned for residential use.
Can I just add a few comments of my own? So when I look at the public comment, I think there's probably over twelve people that came forward and talked about the multifamily units and the sixteen, right, units. So, and I'm hearing you say there was some trepidation when you initially heard that sixteen as well. So my question to you, within this zone, were you able to quantify in any way what buildable, developable lots would be that sixteen units would go on? I guess I'm having a little bit of a hard time understanding, you know, the public comment of the sixteen units. You had a little trepidation around it yourself. So then, doing a deeper dive to say fundamentally, quantitatively, this is what we're going to be looking at from a unit standpoint, like where can we develop these?
Yeah, and I, you know, I looked at the land that's available and there's a lot of site constraints to a lot of these vacant lots that are available. So at sixteen units per acre, as I looked at it and I looked at putting myself in as the civil designer and looking at it, my, there is some concern, but I think there's so many site constraints that we're not going to reach in most cases. I know that it's not, nothing's definite, but I can't tell you, you know, of this development, you know, of this proposal, we're going to get, you know, three hundred new units. I don't know. I don't know what people are going to want and what it is, but I look at the available land and I look at site constraints and that's my biggest limiting factor on this development. So as sixteen units per acre, as the question came up for that inner lot, right, as we looked at that land that's available and we looked at two-point-three acres and we said, oh, well, there could be so many lots in there. But as we looked at individual development opportunity, it's very difficult to hit that point. So to have sixteen units per acre, per se, it's not well-defined in our in form-based code. It's not well-defined. But it could be something that would be interesting to see under a site plan review, you know, where we're at. As a planning board member, I would encourage, as we have site plan come before the board in this new zone, or if we have the new zone, what is the density? And what is the measurement? And I think in a lot of cases, we're not going to be, we're not going to be close to that density. When we start factoring in parking, stormwater control, site constraints, accessibility, things like that, existing structures, property lines, it's just, there's so many there's so many things that you've got to overcome to even get that project to a start that it's oftentimes, we never even hit the mark.
I think there's really are two characters to the area. And one of the tenants of the comp plan was to try to replicate these traditional in-town neighborhoods through the larger area that hasn't developed yet before it's developed in a much more suburban way. Because those neighborhoods that have been developed over the last thirty years with the standards we had in place, those aren't likely to change. Nobody's going to tear down a twenty-year-old home to build in a slightly different style. So the infill developments, I think, is where they would be, if you find a large lot within this area, there is an opportunity to create more units than you've been able to. But on those larger lots, they're also coming to the planning board and you have a chance to create their own neighborhood within that lot, you know, a small neighborhood, fronting on a new roadway or accessway and focus on buffering around it if that's what's needed to make it fit the neighborhood.
Somebody had touched on the HUD vouchers and low income. Like, is there some kind of, like, what is at these multifamilies, are they going to be low income or are they, will they accept vouchers or are they, I guess I'm just trying to see if it's going to be low income or not? Like, are people going to be able to afford these multifamily apartments?
So we, as the city of Auburn did in like two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, there were a number of subsidized multifamily projects that had been in the works for a number of years that all kind of hit in eighteen, nineteen. The city had two applicants that went to the state and won tax credits, and then Auburn Housing also had one they'd been working on, but it kind of got delayed for a few years. They all happened in right around two thousand nineteen. So we added over two hundred units in that eighteen, nineteen period. We really didn't up to then, really didn't have a market that was supporting new construction of multifamily units. We hadn't for quite a few years. Rents were too low to justify the construction costs. After those three developments kind of hit during that period, we really started to see prices start to rise. The council had said, hey, you know, let's take a little break. Let's let these get absorbed into the market and let's see where we are. Make sure we're not hurting the overall market too much by introducing too many units at once. And we really saw the opposite since then. And there really hasn't been an appetite to support the subsidized units while we're seeing so many market rate units because we believe that the supply actually helps solve the problem by keeping rates in check. But I think there's a lot more room for supply before those prices go back to where they're attainable for most people.
So I guess just a couple of thoughts as we've been answering questions and had this discussion. I'm not certain T four-two is, for me, the best choice. I think I lean a little toward T four-one. But that said, I don't know whether I like T four-one the way it is. You know, any change that takes an existing, like Heath goes, I think is a great example. If you make it T four- If you make it T four one, then he goes is suddenly non-conforming. And so what are we going to do about making Heath goes wrong? So I just wanted to throw that out as things that I'm, I'm thinking about. The other concern I have is the concern about the getting a big business in there. So certainly some kind of constraint on size. I do really like the two stories versus three stories in the T four one. So yeah, some of my thoughts.
So I've recently been looking for houses and this is actually an area of the city in which I've been in a couple of houses. Both of them were taller than two stories. Like how many two and a half story houses do we have in those neighborhoods? Like they, they actually seem fairly common.
I, I think there's a lot. I couldn't speak to the percentage or anything. We'd have to do.
Well, two and a half is acceptable on T four two.
Right, but we're talking like T four one, right?
I'm sorry, I meant T four one. T four one, two and a half is acceptable.
And you said T four one, two and a half, I have two and that for 4.2 is three and a half.
You can have, can you have a finished attic in T four?
You can. Yeah, in any of the form-based codes, you can finish that attic story to get that extra half.
But then let's not forget though, then you drop, you drop about 10% from conforming lots when you go to T point one, just to.
What do you mean by 10%?
So as I was taking notes during the discussion, if you're T point, if you're at 4.1 with the two and a half, only 60% of those lots are conforming. But if you're 4.2, then you're at 70% of those lots are conforming. Or they're, I'm sorry, 70% are non-conforming.
How, how do we know those numbers?
That, that's not, it's not conforming, but the, we're talking about the building footprint area, I think is what we're referencing there.
Thank you.
Yeah. The setbacks also change.
The setbacks do change and that's another, that would be a point that I would be happy to discuss. So I, I kind of don't like either of these, but I think T four two feels too permissive. So in a way I might be in the space that's been suggested by a couple of people, which is to go away and think about what we actually want in this area.
Okay, so I want to jump in here because I'm looking at the clock. It is clear that there are some members of the board that seem comfortable moving forward, some that want some more information. I'm hearing the concept of changing the language, which is essentially a zone change. Or else creating an entirely new zone. I think what we need to do is move forward and provide the city council with a recommendation and guidance. So if it is moving forward as is, that's what it's going to be. If the consensus by vote is that, that we don't recommend it, I would strongly suggest, based on the last time the board did this, that there are incredibly strong findings as to why not, so that we are providing feedback. We are not being asked, we're not being asked to create this thing. The city council is asking us what we think about it. So I, I don't think that we should belabor ourselves by trying to develop, develop a solution that we weren't asked to develop. We were asked, does this work or not? So our job is to say, we like it or we don't. And if we like it, we like it because we believe it conforms to X, Y, Z. Obviously those things are going to be tied specifically to the comp plan. If we say we don't like it, it's going to be, my guess, based on the discussion, is going to revolve around permitted uses and densities. And when we do that, we are going to have to be aware that we're also asking for an effective change in the comp plan. Because if, when we had the comp plan in front of us, we said, this works here. So if we're sending it and we're saying it doesn't work, like that's, that's okay. We just need to be very clear about what the implications of that are for us, right? So this is one of those situations where like, we said we liked something. We went, we picked it up from the store and now we're like, okay, do we still like?
I'm going to add one, one complicating thing to what you just said. I agree with everything except we also, according to the comp plan, have to consider the character of the neighborhood. And that's where in parts of this area, I actually stumble over the density issue. So I agree with you completely.
Okay, so, so I, I would, I would, if you are creating a set of findings that are describing density, I would ask you to just reference that. That makes sense to reference that in, in the comp plan, right? So I'm sorry, I didn't mean to like put a halt on it. What I'm saying is we could, we could continue to discuss this forever. The question we are being asked is do we, with the information we've been provided, we've now had two public hearings. We've heard from the public. We've heard from staff multiple times. We've had a chance to look at a few different lots. As a board, we need to collectively decide if this is something that we are going to send a favorable decision with regard to, or if we are going to say that we don't recommend it. The public needs to know that the city council is not beholden unto us. I said at the beginning of this process, we are not an adjudicatory board with regard to this specific, this specific item. The city council's sole adjudicatory board over implementation of this, all right? So we need to decide whether we're going to tell them we like it or we don't. So that's where I would like to see the, the board discussion head from here. Yes, Mr. Bergeron?
The, the, I, I like the overall intent of it. But the more recent addition to allow them to use public parking and not require them to have parking on site is something that I would not, I would not support. That would just create a lot of parking on the streets. And while that might slow down traffic on Davis Ave, like we noted, that's not really the place.
Well, I think we made it clear that on-street parking does not count as public.
It does not.
It does not count as.
I know, but if in reality, the person who lives in that house is going to park out front and not go to the parking spot 1,000 feet away unless it's snowing. So until unless it's a snow day, those people are going to park in the street and it's going to narrow all those neighborhood streets.
So I get to park, if I live in that neighborhood, I get to park on the side of the street now, but someone who moves in doesn't get to?
But you wouldn't, if there was a pile, you'd have to move to a spot where you, you wouldn't be able to park in the street.
This is what happens in those neighborhoods now, right? I mean.
Yes, but they are required to have a spot on their lot for at least one car per unit, which this allowing them to put, to not have it on-site into a parking resource within 1,000 feet, of which they don't exist, there are none that exist in that zone. I don't, that's why I would not support it.
Okay, I, I guess my response to that would be if it doesn't exist within 1,000 feet of that lot, then they're required to provide the off, off-street parking. And if it does exist within 1,000 feet, they've parked on the side of the road, it's a snowstorm and like, everyone else who parked on the side of the road, they're going to go put their car off-street in the public parking that's been provided within 1,000 feet.
I'll just state what I was, my thoughts on it.
Okay, I, I apologize. I know I just came down kind of heavy there.
I, I think we have a situation where if it smells like oranges and looks like oranges, then we should probably call it oranges. And if we have homes that are not meeting the setback requirements or the size requirements and shifting to this zone, then we owe it to call it what it is. You know, the staff has worked hard on this. We've workshopped this. We've now tabled this one meeting already. We have people who are waiting in the wings to solve some of these problems. And we have people like Mr. LeBree, who was at the last meeting, who has family needs. And those aren't going away. And the longer that we kick this down the road, I think sooner or later, we have to step up and do what we're supposed to do and that's to, to make a recommendation. And for those reasons, I'm prepared to vote in favor, as is.
Yeah, I'll just chime in here, maybe I'll be a little bit shorter, but I am in favor as well. I think my only hesitation would be the 16 units. I think we heard some public comment around that. I think John, you had had some initial trepidation. And then from my own perspective, again, I kind of am a numbers girl and I would want to see the figures behind it. So that would be my only hesitation. So that's my two cents.
I am also for it. The only probably hesitation I have is again, is the 16 units, it seems a little heavy. But I also maybe just, you know, buttoning up that, the four two, like, like the general retail and things like that, to how many people you could have in a restaurant rather than, I mean, it says specialty, but I think like that we should actually permit it and make it small.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this?
So we, we are being asked to comment on this recommendation. Right, that we adopt T 4.2 in this area.
We like it or we don't. If we like it and we have problems, we like it, but these are the problems we have. We don't like it. This is why we don't like it.
So you, I just heard three options there.
No, no, I, I apologize. I clarified. So either we like it and this is why we believe it's supported and we like this. But within that, we can comment about things that give us hesitation. So we can send it as a, we could say we just don't like it, right? This is why we don't like it. We could say, I guess there are three choices. We could say we like it as is, or we could say, yeah, we like it, but there's some issues. So yeah, you're right, three.
Yep, okay. So I would like to make a motion to recommend, recommend the city council. Or to, let's see, I would like to make a motion to tell the city council that we are in favor of adopting form-based code in this area. T four two would work, except we have concerns about the overall density and how that will impact the characteristics of many of the neighborhoods in this region.
And can I ask you to add a statement of finding as to perhaps why it's supported? Why, why, why you believe it should be supported? Like is it the comp plan? Is it?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I.
I apologize.
No, no, it's fine. I, I just accepted that as given. It does follow the comp plan in general. Increasing density, I believe the current density is four units per acre. Increasing that to something like eight units, but maybe not 16 would actually be consistent with the comp plan in terms of its desire to develop from the core out, so infill. And this is, this encourages infill. It also moves to remove a zoning district from the city of Auburn. By eliminating, well, two zoning districts by eliminating urban residential and multifamily residential.
Okay, so to make sure we understand, correct me if I'm wrong. There is a motion on the table to send a favorable recommendation stating that the planning board overall supports a proposed change to rezone to a form-based code. But that in this specific area, there are concerns around T four two with regard to density and specific uses. And that the findings are that the change does comply and is supported by the 2010 and most recent comp plan review that it brings houses into conformity that are currently non-conformity and that it addresses the city's concern with regard to building inward towards out? Is that what I heard?
Yep.
Did I miss anything?
No, that's it.
So that is the motion on the table. Is there a second?
Well, I, I, I don't know what that means. So I think we're either supporting this with some concerns, period. Supporting this as is, or we're not supporting it.
I, I think, I think it is a supporting with concerns and it may have just been the way that it was, that it was worded. That.
Can we keep it that simple?
That.
We have to give our concerns and we have to give the reasons why we like it.
Mr. Duval made a motion to.
I, I, I don't know what I'm voting on if we keep it that way. So we need to simplify it for people like me.
I, I understand. Correct me at any time. Yeah, I made a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to the city council. I will read it here and amend it to, does that sound, are you okay with that?
Or I can, I can do it again if you, that's a matter.
So Mr. Duval is making a motion to recommend to, send a favorable recommendation to the city council to amend the proposed boundary to be adjusted from urban residential to traditional neighborhood development district T four two. With the findings that we're zoning to form-based zone meets the intent, the intent of the comp plan, the 2010 and 2000 and the most recent comp plan, achieves the goal of bringing the maximum number of houses, house lots into conformity and achieves the goal of infill from the city center outward with the concern that T four two may present too high density for the area and that there may be some uses within it that should be looked at. Is that clearer?
Actually, do you mind if I just chime in here real quick? It's not clear to me that last two sentences around the concern of density. So where's the concern? Like I feel like if I was to get something like that, I would be like, oh, there's concern. What's the concern?
I'll, I'll leave that to Mr. Duval to be more specific.
Units, it gets in the shops, like where's the concern?
Concern that the housing density is too dense.
In, I'm, I'm like, I'm sorry, I'm just very cut and dry. In what way? Like is it the 16 units? Is it like?
Yeah, that's the density. The density is the 16 units and so the 16 units is too high.
Okay.
So then would the recommendation include a reduction from 16 units to eight?
Not as I've made it, but it is, if it's seconded, it could be amended as such.
Is that your intent?
I, I mean, yes, I could, sure. I don't, I haven't thought that far. We don't have a second yet, so.
Well, I, I need to, I need to understand what we're voting on, so I can't second that. If we say 16, but 16 is too high, but 15 is okay.
Okay, so I would, I would ask that members of the board recognize that this discussion actually has to wait until this is seconded and then we can have the discussion. Then, and then absolutely we can get into the weeds about, well, what is that number going to be? Someone can amend it to add a number, someone can amend it to take those concerns out altogether, right? Like that's, but to move forward to discuss, that's the motion. So my question is, does everyone on the board understand the motion being made? I'm not asking you to, to agree with it or think that it's the clearest motion, but do you understand the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second it. Now, discussion on the motion. Mr. Bergeron, your hand, your hand up?
I would, I would have, I could be the one to put forward an amendment so that the concern about the 16 units per acre could be addressed if it was reduced to eight units per acre.
There's a motion to amend the motion to clarify. Okay.
Can you fi, can he finish the sentence?
To clarify that the concern with regard to density should be reworded to say that the sixteen units per acre should be amended to eight units per acre.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
That's the only modification to this, is what I'm understanding, is that accurate?
Right now.
Yeah.
And I, okay.
Is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, I will take a vote. All those in favor. One, two, three. All those opposed?
Wait. Is everybody clear that we're just voting on the amendment from sixteen to eight?
Do, do we understand that? We're mo, we're, we're, yeah, we're voting on the amendment, not the actual main motion.
Sorry, sorry, and the amendment is from the sixteen units to eight?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Would you like me to call a vote again, now that you have been understanding? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment? All those against? Amendment passes four-three. The main motion has been amended to now clarify that the concern, um, that is not a concern with the sixteen units, but that the recommendation is that sixteen units be reduced, sixteen units per acre be reduced to eight. Is there any other discussion on the main motion? Seeing no more discussion on the main motion, I will call a vote. This is a vote on the main motion to, to forward the favorable recommendation as described by Mr. Duval, and amended, um, by Mr. Bergeron's amendment. All those in favor?
A procedural, procedural thing.
Yes.
So if this passes, I get it, it goes to, uh, to the board. If it doesn't, is there an opportunity to make another motion?
Yes.
There, there is, uh, there is, but it becomes difficult because it has to be, there has to be a substantive difference. We are not allowed to simply continue to make motions. So I guess it would, could boil down to an argument on the board as to whether or not it's substantive.
An, an option is, if you don't like this, you could propose another amendment to change it.
Or I could propose one after.
If it's. It would be, for instance, there would be no question if you were to propose a motion that said we will forward a negative recommendation that is sub- substantially different from the current, that is a substantive difference from the current motion. It could be argued that you could make a motion, uh, just saying, we're gonna forward this with no caveats. Someone might say that's not really different enough from the current motion. Be allowed. We are getting into the weeds of Robert's rules. If it is, if you, if you dislike, um, you dislike this motion, your best bet is to try to amend it if you are going to try to propose another motion that is.
Uh, then I'd like to make another motion, or amend, I'd like to amend, I'd like to amend this motion.
Yes.
I'd like the motion to revert to, uh, the motion as written in our packet without the adjustments to, um, units slash density.
The motion as written in our packets also has no discussion of, um, has no discussion of density or, um, uses, yes? You're clear with that?
Correct.
Okay. So there's a motion to amend the motion, um, to reword it to read exactly as written in the staff packet, I'm assuming under item number three on page three of three.
Correct.
Is there a second? It says the following, I make a motion to recom, I make a motion to recommend to city council to amend the proposed boundary be adjusted from urban residential to traditional neighborhood development district T dash four-point-two. The total amendment includes one thousand six hundred eighty-seven point four-one acres shown on the map as Exhibit C. To find the building front setbacks in all form-based code as accessways and parking areas utilize public parking in all form-based code.
I second.
Is there any discussion on the motion to amend?
I would like to make a secondary amendment, I just saw, um, it reads to, um, amend the proposed boundary adjusted from urban resident, residential. It should also read, I would then add or multifamily suburban to traditional neighborhood development district.
There is now an emotion to, a motion to amend the amendment, yes?
Yep.
To include or multifamily suburban in the description of the, uh, area to be rezoned. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion on that amendment?
Well, I think that's a great catch, actually, 'cause those were also folded in to this map.
It should, it should happen no matter what, I agree.
Yep.
Is there any discussion beyond that? All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstaining? Okay. We are now back to a motion to amend the main motion to read exactly as it reads, um, in the staff packet. Uh, amended to also include or multifamily suburban. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion to amend carries. The main emotion has been amended to read as it is written within the staff packet. Is there any more discussion on the main motion?
So we just voted to reverse the, we, I made the amendment, we voted all positively for it. He removed it, and then it got voted positively for that.
Uh, there was a motion that was, yeah, so there was a motion.
So didn't we already vote on it then, the first time around?
Or, mm, no, because this is substantial.
And it was seconded and everyone voted for the amendment? Wasn't that a?
So, so it was changed, right? To read, it was changed to read, uh, to include your amendment?
Yep.
Yes? And then there was a motion to amend that amended motion, that you amended, to read something different. We, at this point, have only approved amendments, we have not approved the main motion.
I know, but the amendment that got approved then just got unapproved by the same voting members, I mean, the same group of people.
Yeah, there was a second, there was a second amendment to strike any qualifications on our recommendations, so we are now recommending. Yeah, it's confusing, we are now, the question, well, maybe the chair, can you state the question in the clear terms of forward recommendation, recommendation with caveats? Forward, no recommendation?
So, it began as a motion to forward, um, worded independently by a planning board member, um, with caveats. It was amended to, um, it was amended to include your amendment.
I, I know.
Yep. So now it went back, so now it was a main motion, again. That main motion was then amended to read differently, i.e. to drop
The thing that we had all just voted for. To drop the thing that we had all just voted for, or not all, but had passed.
Correct.
Okay. So that, that left, the vote, my question is the more of a procedural, uh, that I, we, we voted as a voting body to include my, uh, reduction from sixteen to eight.
The vote was to change the language.
Hmm.
The, what is written here, um, I, I would, there's, it's not exactly what Mr. Duval said. There, there are things here that were not at all what he said.
I understand what's happening, I just don't know if you understand exactly what I was getting at, but it's.
And I do understand what you're saying, you're saying, it seems odd that there is a member on the board who at one point voted to make an amendment to add something into a motion, and then in their next vote chose to take everything out.
Yes.
I understand that.
Okay. That's it?
Incredibly, this is by far, I think, the most confusing, uh, motion I've seen in quite literally a decade. I don't think I've seen one like this before. All right, so we are back to the main motion, which has been amended to read exactly as written in the staff report. Is there any discussion?
With the addition of the multifamily suburban.
With the addition, yes, correct, with the addition of the multifamily suburban. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will take a vote on the motion. All those in favor? All those against? Motion carries four-three. I would like to take a moment and thank everyone who came from the public. What I would ask you. For those that are interested in listening, I would encourage you to go to the city council, as it is, the city council is going to make substantive changes to this, regardless of what we do. So, if you feel strongly about this, I would ask you to go speak to the city council. Again, as they are the ones that have the adjudicatory power to make something happen. What time is it? It is nine twenty-three.
So, Mr. Chair, can I make a motion to, um, postpone original item four, current item five on the agenda until our next regular meeting?
Well, I, I was gonna say, we actually need a motion to take it up, period, otherwise it automatically gets. I think that's the way our rules are written.
So we have to have a motion to take up any further items on the, we have to do public comment, right?
I, I would assume that we would choose to, yeah.
So I'm gonna make a mo, motion to continue with the agenda.
All items?
Uh, continue with item number six, public comment, followed by item six, seven, eight, and nine on the agenda.
There are mo, there, so does everyone understand why we're doing this? Our, our planning board rules state that we will not take up new business past nine unless there is a unanimous vote of the board to do so. So Mr. Duval is making a motion that we, um, take up the following items. Number six, public comment, seven planning board items for discussion, eight miscellaneous upcoming items for April, and nine adjournment.
If, if I could just provide a piece of information as you make your decision, that's certainly fine, either way, we do have David Roke, uh, retired state soil scientist here that's been waiting for this issue that.
I know, it is unfortunate that this took so long. Um, I, I had wanted to allow people to say their piece before we got to the workshop, but, um, I think maybe we should have taken the workshop first.
We can ask him to return and head the next meeting.
Oh, I think since Mr. Roke is here, we should ask first, perhaps? Oh, where is he? Oh, there we go. Mr. Roke, are you able to return in the future? Okay. All right. So there is a motion, does anyone need the motion repeated? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded.
This has to be unanimous?
Yep, or else we go right to adjournment. Any, any other discussion, questions? Seeing none, I'll take a vote, all those in favor? All those against? Motion is, I, I believe it needs to be unanimous, correct?
To, to continue the agenda on a new item, yes, I think that's right.
Uh, motion fails to, uh, pass unanimously, we will move towards a, to adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.